Okay. So, good evening. We'd like to call the regular council meeting of January 12th to order. Would Clerk call a roll, please?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burton.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Scharf. Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wilbach.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you and welcome to our new council members and the new constitution of the council. So, our first item on the agenda is a study session that would be a presentation from the Caltrain staff on the Peninsula Corridor Electrification Project Final EIR. And staff has a few brief comments.
Thank you, Mayor Holman and council members. My name is Richard Hackman. I'm a management analyst with the City of Palo Alto. Tonight with us, we have staff from Caltrain who will provide for you a presentation on the Caltrain's Peninsula Corridor Electrification Project, including both historical aspects of the project and where the project stands today. With tonight being a study session, following the presentation by Caltrain, city and Caltrain staff will take policymaker comments, questions, and recommendations with the plan to work together at a staff level following the meeting to address as many of those as we can. City staff will then follow up with council on the conclusions of those discussions. To help put this project into context, Caltrain's 2014 average weekday ridership was over 52,000 riders. Ten years prior in 2004, Caltrain averaged just 24,000 weekday riders, less than half the riders we have today. The downtown Palo Alto Caltrain station continues to be Caltrain's second busiest station, averaging over 6,000 weekday riders with numerous baby bullet trains coming into Palo Alto above capacity. Caltrain continues to be of vital importance to the Palo Alto transportation network and is a key reason why we are on record supporting the system. However, despite the tremendous support, there are still issues of concern that have been raised which both the city and Caltrain are continually trying to address. With that said, I will now turn the presentation over to Mary Lee of Caltrain, and she'll take it from here. So, yeah, you can come sit over here.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Marion Lee with Caltrain, and I'm the executive officer of the Caltrain Modernization Program, and thank you very much for making the time for us. I'm here with Rich Walters to my right. He's the consultant from ICF that has helped us prepare our environmental document associated with this project. What we'd like to do today is, given also a large number of the new council members, if we can walk you through our program, a brief description of our project, and then I will introduce Rich, who will walk you through what we just achieved with finalization of our environmental document. And what this program is, is an incremental approach to making investments in the corridor so that we can support more riders, grow our ridership for the system. We've had significant growth, but we anticipate the demand will continue, so there's always a challenge to figure out how to increase service in the corridor. The program is broken into two areas, and one is called the Early Investment Program. The first component of that is a project that is really an advanced signal system. There's a technical term for it, but what it is, is a safety project that's focused on mandated performance attributes by the Federal Railroad Administration to make sure that a smart system kicks in if there's human error and there's a potential of trains colliding. These incidents happen nationwide and internationally, and so there is a federal focus on making sure that properties like ours have a way with dealing with human error. It's called Positive Train Control. It's a key element of the Advanced Signal System. It also includes performance attributes that's going to allow us to run our trains closer together. What that helps us do is run more trains in the corridor, which provides more capacity for our growing ridership. That project is currently being installed. It is scheduled to be in revenue service completed by the end of 2015, which is the federal mandated completion year. The topic at hand for today is really the second element of the Early Investment Program. It's called the Peninsula Corridor Electrification Project. We anticipate this effort with revenue service in the 2020 to 2021 timeframe. In the subsequent slides, I will provide more details about what that project is. The second aspect of the program deals with our commitment to high-speed rail. We will be modernizing our system in a way that is compatible with high-speed rail service. They're also financially contributing to our electrification project and the Advanced Signal System project. While the first increment, this early investment program, has specific utility for Caltrain in the future, it will also have utility for high-speed rail when it eventually gets here from the Central Valley. The purpose of what we are trying to do specifically to meet commuter ridership needs is we do need to improve train performance, and not for the sake of just doing it, but really to grow the capacity and the type of quality service that our customers desire. We also want to do this in a way where we can increase revenue by collecting more fares from the growing customers and reduce costs by reducing our dependence on diesel and using electricity. We will also be reducing our footprint on the environment, we will, from converting from diesel to electricity. And then lastly, and importantly, is all that we do does need to be compatible with an electrified infrastructure that will support high-speed rail in the future. So, this is our project. We will be electrifying 51 miles of our corridor. That is from the Fourth and King Terminus Station in San Francisco to the Tamian Station in San Jose, which is just one station south of Deirdre. The electrification infrastructure that we will be installing in our corridor is an overlay to what exists today. We will not be moving our tracks. We will not be changing the stations. What we will be doing is installing what is called an overhead contact system and traction power facilities, which will allow us to pull electricity from the electric grid, pull it into our corridor, and run what are called Electric Multiple Unit trains. The service that we will provide in terms of speed, we will accommodate a speed bracket up to 70 miles per hour. 79 miles per hour is what we currently provide. Yes, we will increase it in the future when high-speed rail is here, but our current project is within what we operate today. The service increase that we are planning for is we will be providing six trains per direction per peak hour. That is an increase from five, which is what we provide today. Additionally, for those trains that we're able to convert from diesel to electric multiple units, all of those trains will have the capability to either make more stops at stations throughout the corridor or reduce the travel time. So, as an example, if we take our bullet, baby bullet train that's run on diesel, it is able to get from San Francisco to San Jose in just under an hour, and it stops at about five to seven stations. If we were to convert that to an electric train, if we held the travel time consistent, we'd be able to double the number of station stops. Or if we held the station stops consistent, we'd be able to reduce that travel time from approximately an hour to 45 minutes. As part of our project, we will be restoring service to Atherton and Broadway, whose services during the weekday was closed due to insufficient ridership. We will be operating a combination of our electric vehicles and some still to be diesel until the remaining diesel reach the end of their life. So, as part of this project, about 75% of the fleet will be electric. 25% will remain diesel because they still have life in them. When they run out of their lifecycle, we will need to find more funding and convert those to electric trains as well. That will result a full electric fleet we will eventually run. We are committed to continuing our tenant service. In the corridor, we have freight. We also have other inner-city service, which is ACE and Capitol Corridor and Amtrak. This is a visual of the electrification project. It's a depiction, not at a station and also at a station, as mentioned, all of those will remain the same, but you will start to see the overhead wires in both of those simulations and also a simulated electric multiple unit. We have just completed our environmental process last week with board approval. This is the road that we were on in achieving that milestone. We had completed conceptual design on an electrification project back in 2002. We attempted to clear environmental process with the release of a draft EAEIR, meaning it was a combined federal and state environmental document in 2004. We then completed 35% design in 2008, and then we completed that EAEIR. At that time, we received a federal clearance called a Fonzie, finding of no significant impact from the Federal Transportation Administration. And then we had our state clearance postponed due to the unknowns of high-speed rail. Since that time, we have put a funding plan, a sufficient funding plan in place. We have a better understanding of what high-speed rail intends, and with those two milestones reached, we worked with our stakeholders and committed to them to do a new state environmental document. That effort started in 2013, and we just finalized it and certified it by the board last week in January of 2015. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Rich Walters, who will walk you through more of the details of our environmental document.
Does that reach her? Do we have to switch? Okay. Good evening, members of the council. Going to walk you quickly through just some details, an overview of the EIR, through the final EIR. Just process-wise, notice of preparation was released in late January of 2013. We did about 45 days. That's about 15 days longer than required under SEQA. We had four public meetings at that time. I believe one of those was here in these chambers. Took about a year to pull together the draft EIR. It was released in late February of 2014. We did 60 days instead of the mandatory 45 days for that. We also did four more public meetings and circulated it widely. The FEIR was made available on December 4th of 2014. Put it in all of the usual locations, websites, and in local libraries as well, and notified all the commenters and provided a number of them with the document as well. The resolutions that were adopted on January 8th last Thursday were for certification of the EIR, adoption of SEQA findings, statement of overriding considerations, adopting a mitigation monitoring reporting program, and adopting the project. I'll also note that the JPB reserved the right, if it's challenged legally, to argue in court that the SDB, the Surface Transportation Board, has identified that there's a preemption of state environmental law for rail projects that are under their jurisdiction. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later in my presentation. Throughout the process for SEQA, we also did additional stakeholder coordination beyond the minimum that is required by SEQA. Through both the JPB and Advisory Committees, the Citizen Advisory Commission?
Advisory Committee.
Citizen Advisory Committee and the Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Local Policymaker Group that includes local elected officials from up and down the corridor, a city and county staff coordination group that your staff participated in, that would we meet nominally monthly to talk about items, direct one-on-one technical staff coordination outreach at many of the stations, and various public information material that was handed out at the stations and other fora. At a very macro level, looking at the long-term benefits of the project that are identified in the EIR, these are for 2040 in a situation where Caltrain would hopefully by then have the funding to be fully electrified for the San Jose to San Francisco service, running 100% EMUs, greenhouse gas reductions of nearly 180,000 metric tons per year, reducing daily vehicle miles traveled by about 620,000 miles. And that VMT reduction is not only regional, but we actually analyzed it for every single city along the entire route between San Jose and San Francisco, and including in Palo Alto, every city saw a overall vehicle miles traveled reduction with the project compared to no project conditions. Engine noise would be reduced. There are a few locations where engine noise would go, overall noise would go up a little, but in most locations with the project, it would actually go down a little primarily because the EMUs are much quieter than diesel locomotives. Air pollution, criteria pollutants would be reduced by up to 97%, varies depending on the pollutant. Daily ridership, the forecasts are up to 111,000, so a substantial increase from today. And as Marion had identified, an improved frequency and/or quicker trips allowed by the better service with EMUs. Key EIR issues, not to slight any issue that's not on this list, but issues that came up the most often and perhaps most commented on. Visual aesthetics of new facilities, traction power facilities other than trees, tree removal and its effect on aesthetics and dust and noise and other things. Noise, obviously. Localized traffic, traction power facilities, mostly from aesthetics and a few other concerns that were raised about their placement, bicycles onboard, freight and its compatibility with this electrification, consideration of alternatives, and kind of a SEQA issue about high-speed rail and segmentation. And since I won't go into that later on, I just want to speak to that last point. I think the other issues are probably more self-explanatory. Some people were of the opinion that this project could not be analyzed in its own EIR, separate from the high-speed rail analysis between San Jose and San Francisco. And SEQA has long-set rules about what projects, when projects that have some relation, how they can be analyzed, whether they all need to be analyzed together or whether they can be analyzed in separate documents. And the first test is what is called independent utility. Does this project require the next project in order to operate? A Caltrain electrification project could operate whether or not there's high-speed rail from a technical point of view. Is it by a different proponent? There's obviously a different proponent in high-speed rail versus Caltrain for the two different projects. And do they have, it's called logical endpoints or logical termini. This project goes from San Jose to San Francisco. There isn't, we're not electrifying and leaving some dangling end out there that's for some other purpose than the Caltrain electrification. And finally, and most critically, under SEQA, it's the analysis of whether, are all the impacts going to be disclosed and can they be fully disclosed? At this point, the high-speed rail's plans for this project are conceptual in terms of blended service. So, the EIR does cover their conceptual impacts at a very rough level in the cumulative analysis, which is all that could practically be done at this point. And whatever processes are required under law for the high-speed rail, they will have to comply with that for their full service. This EIR is not clearing the building of additional facilities to accommodate high-speed rail beyond what's necessary for this project. So, under that, it's Caltrain's opinion that this can be analyzed in a separate document. Some of the key operational mitigation that was adopted by the board last week on aesthetics and trees, there are commitments made about screening with vegetation, traction power facilities, about working with local communities to clarify that mitigation, finalize it. Also, at looking at different pole alignments in terms of where you can use center poles or some other pole designs, you can reduce the amount of trees, not avoid it entirely, but you can reduce it substantially, and several other aesthetic mitigations that are included. Biological resources, the standard mitigation that you would expect where we encounter some sensitive species, and I already talked about tree mitigation. Cultural resources, we have historic stations, including in Palo Alto, so there are some commitments about careful pole placement to make sure that we're not affecting those historic structures. Electromagnetic interference, mostly a concern. The EIR does not find a significant health effect of the electrification, but there is some concern about interference with freight signals. And that can be managed. It's been managed on many other projects before. There's mitigation to make sure it's done right. Hydrology and water quality, mostly a concern, obviously, for construction. And then transportation, there is traffic mitigation where we found feasible mitigation for some localized traffic effects, as well as some pedestrian effects and bicycle as Construction mitigation is probably more similar to projects that you've seen before in terms of managing those temporary effects on air quality, cultural resources, erosion, sedimentation, noise control for using during construction, utilities, traffic control plans, and in many locations in that it does involve local jurisdictions, for example, in cooperation on traffic control plans and other things. So, there's a lot of coordination that has to happen for any project, and we've taken that into account. In the cumulative mitigation, because we are, we know that high-speed rail intends to come here, we did consider them in our cumulative mitigation to the extent we could, as well as some of the other increases of freight rail and in the southern part of this corridor for other passenger rail. So, noise is a cumulative impact that we identify that's significant, and one of the primary ways that Caltrain could help to reduce those would be to fully electrify the operations. And so, to finally swap out the remaining diesels that have a little bit more life of them, but by the time you replace them, that would help to reduce it. And if not, or in combination, to contribute fair share to cumulative noise mitigation at significant locations that might consist of quiet zones, possibly grade separations that would require funding, of course, or building insulation. There's also a mitigation to contribute fair share for cumulative vibration mitigation that may occur. Transportation, Caltrain has committed to a suite of mitigations that have been determined to be feasible at certain roadways that consist of signals and geometric configurations. That will address some, but not all, of the impacts. That Caltrain would support local and regional efforts on grade separations, as it has done in the past at numerous locations, such as the most recent is San Bruno Grade Separation Project, but that it can't on its own make a commitment that would be in the order of hundreds of millions to billions of dollars to grade separate all of these, that it has to be a phased operation in cooperation with other funding partners. We have some mitigation in San Francisco to make sure that we will be compatible with the electric trolley bus and that we also provide adequate freight clearances on portions of the project so that freight can continue their operations. There are some significant unavoidable impacts identified in the final EIR. To one of the San Francisco tunnels, in order to provide adequate clearance for the Caltrain trains as well as freight, there would have to be some notching that would affect some of the decorative material. During construction, at certain locations that might be constrained, we may not be able to effectively control all the noise. There will be a need for nighttime construction as well as daytime construction. It's an active corridor, and shutting it down during the day would be highly disruptive, so we will have to have nighttime construction. During operations, at some locations, even though we require tree replacement, we don't think that we'll be 100% successful in planting trees at all locations that are affected to compensate for the aesthetic change. Sea level rise is a long-term concern that exists with or without this project. There's a couple low spots that Caltrain will need to address in time. Localized traffic, at some locations where we couldn't find a feasible mitigation or where the only feasible mitigation is a grade separation, we have some unavoidable impacts in those really localized areas. Cumulative noise, I already talked about, and there's also one potential impact related to freight diversion that we don't think actually will happen, but in case of it, we've disclosed it. As SEQA requires, if significant unavoidable impacts are identified, you have to make a statement of overriding considerations, and I've summarized what's in that statement that was adopted last week, which include improved Caltrain service and ridership, electrification as the best performance characteristics, excuse me, of the feasible alternatives that we looked at, reduction of air pollution, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, reduction of overall vehicle miles traveled and city-by-city vehicle miles traveled, and support for transit-oriented development, and consistency with the planning for the downtown extension to the TransBay Transit Center and future high-speed rail use of the corridor. Finally, on the final EIR, the City of Palo Alto did submit a comment. I won't go back to all the comments on the draft, which we responded to, that raised these five issues that were related to the EIR, and I'm just going to talk very briefly about each one of those. On local traffic impacts, the city remains concerned about impacts at Churchill, Meadow, and Charleston, which are grade crossings. And due to geometric constraints on it, we didn't find any feasible mitigation other than grade separation, which Caltrain is not financially capable of doing. I think you've had a recent study that had an independent view at what some of the costs would be to grade separate those. That was, if I totaled it up for the independent, I think it was 276 million, somewhere in that range. Hatchmont-McDonald, you had hired to do a study on that. You also studied some trenching options. The city remained concerned about the location of one of the paralleling stations. It's called Paralleling Station 5 or PS5. The EIR includes three different options. Two of them were in the draft EIR, and a third was added in response to comment to increase the feasible options. The city was most concerned about option one, which is located at Green Meadow Way and Alma, and was concerned both about its aesthetic impacts to the neighborhood as well as potential impacts to the historic portion of, what is it called? Of the historic district, which is made of the Eichlers, which is just back from Alma. And we had reviewed both of those impacts in the EIR. We didn't find a significant impact to the cultural resources of that historic district, primarily because it is not actually abutting Alma. It's actually back from Alma. City may disagree with our determination, but we did address it. The Caltrain does have multiple options to choose. It has not chosen yet, and Marion can speak about that, the selection process in a moment if you'd like. The city was also concerned about the process for selecting the overhead contact system or OCS poles, how that would happen. There is committed mitigation in the EIR to reduce tree and right-of-way impacts by hopefully moving the poles in or using alternative designs. The mitigation does require coordination with the City of Palo Alto, as it would within all the other cities, on pole selection and design. all the other cities, on pole selection and design at the stations, so at the University Avenue Station and the California Avenue Station. So that is committed to, and that's a process that we would be coordinating. We'd also be coordinating on the tree analysis with that mitigation design. So there's a fair amount of coordination called for in the mitigation. City remained concerned about El Palo Alto, and asked for coordination between the city's arborist and Caltrain during, as we go forward in construction, to make sure that it's taken care of. We did adopt a specific design at El Palo Alto to avoid putting the wires outside of the bridge and move them inside the bridge to avoid effects to El Palo Alto. There might be a little bit of effect, right now the limbs actually come out over the bridge superstructure, and my understanding is there's already trimming now. That would probably need to continue for safe rail operations, but it shouldn't increase over the existing. Nevertheless, the mitigation does commit us to work with Palo Alto to coordinate on the effects to El Palo Alto. And then finally, on STB preemption, so lawyers will argue, there is a lot of case law that is supporting the preemption rulings that have been made by the STB concerning SEQA. There are recent cases that are working their way through the California courts on this, and the statement of the JPB is that they reserve the right to assert this. Now, the resolutions also committed Caltrain to all the mitigation that is identified in the EIR, regardless of the STB preemption and how that's ultimately worked out in court. So, that's the assertion that's been adopted by the board, but it doesn't change the commitment that the agency has made to implement everything that it's identified in the EIR. With that, I will return it to the chair, and we're here to answer your questions.
Thank you very much, and I don't have any lights from council members in terms of questions. Councilwoman Niss.
Hi, it's nice to see you. A couple of questions going forward on this, and you didn't discuss this tonight. Talk a little more about the blended system, which is something that we have agreed to. Talk more about the electrification aspect of it. And then, long-term, we've had some discussions about the height of the, essentially, of the trains, and therefore of the platform. I don't know if you're ready to discuss those tonight or not, but as we go forward, given that High-Speed Rail has now broken ground, and has pretty much determined what its corridor is going to be, at least for the first phase of it, I know that you're thinking of where we might be in 10 or 20 years as well. So if you would just add on a bit to those.
So, I'm going to first start with confirming what we're not clearing in this environmental document. Even though we are doing everything we can to make sure we can support High-Speed Rail in the future, our environmental document does not clear High-Speed Rail. It clears Caltrain.
Thank you, I hope that's in the press tomorrow. Right.
Yes. But having said that, they are funding about half of our program, and it's because the same 25-kV electrification infrastructure is the infrastructure that High-Speed Rail need to run their trains. They're not giving us free money, they get something in return. In order for them to run that service, they need to go through a separate environmental document. They can assert the same, I guess, STB preemption, but they still need to go through a federal environmental process. And that process will need to clear all of the additive investments that they will need to make in the corridor. So, for example, they still have to build a High-Speed Rail station. In the peninsula, there's one at Millbrae, they're going to need to build one at Deardon. Those things are not part of our project, but they're additive investments in the future. The other one, that's a very hot topic, is the building of what are additional tracks, called passing tracks, that High-Speed Rail would use to bypass our slower trains. So those are all examples of additional infrastructure that they would need to put in place to ultimately support the type of service that they're anticipating. They are, they would be required to go through a planning process with all of the communities so that they understand what these additional infrastructure elements are, and then they will need to go through an environmental process to clear that project before they can run High-Speed Rail service. The second item that Councilmember Niss brought up has to do with, again, something that is a future investment for the corridor. So as you know, when you go to our Caltrain trains and you ride our Caltrain trains, you've got to step up, so the platforms are not at the same level as the floor of the cars. So like a BART system, where you could literally roll on and off. Currently, we do not have level boarding, so people get to the platform and they have to step up and step down. We have a great opportunity with the purchase of our new cars to achieve level boarding, where we would raise the platforms, which are currently at eight inches above rail, that's how we measure things, to a higher level so that the level of the platforms can match the new floor height of our electric trains. This, again, is not in our current project, because we're not touching the stations, but it is our goal to provide level boarding in the future, which means ADA requirements, as well as there are operational benefits to having that type of a boarding-on and boarding-off system. The issue that we're working with High-Speed Rail on, which has been challenging, it's challenging enough just to do that for us, because we have, we have like 32 stations, and we have a live, active railroad, so trying to make those modifications is challenging enough. But the situation that has come up is, at certain stations, we will be operating with High-Speed Rail. And so the question posed to us is, will you have the same level boarding height as High-Speed Rail? And the way things were going, it wasn't going to be the same. They were going to be purchasing vehicles that had a different floor boarding height than ours. It's twice the height of ours. Ours was at 25, theirs is at 50, and it's a big difference. The reason why in general is because those are the cars readily available. We are trying to find vehicles that are readily available in the vehicle manufacturing industry. We have been told that we need to see if there's a technical solution to making sure that in the future, we do not preclude compatible boarding heights with High-Speed Rail. So we are currently doing that technical work. We will be having some policy-level discussions in the early summer timeframe. While it does not impact the electrification infrastructure, it may impact the specs that we put out for our vehicles that we purchase, and it will have implications and trade-offs in terms of costs and various levels of impacts to all of our stations potentially. This is what staff has been tasked with in terms of identifying and laying out to our policymakers. So, to be determined, but the technical work is ongoing, and we hope to have conclusion on that in the summer timeframe.
Just one follow-up question, and this is one that, is it Mark?
Rich.
Rich.
Rich. Talked about briefly, which is how San Mateo County happened to have the number of, you know, at grade crossings altered for them, either through tunneling or so forth. And so, again, talk about the role that Caltrain had in that, as far as the tax that was passed and so forth.
My name's not Mark, but I'm going to try and reach that one. So, grade separations are very expensive, but we like them, and some cities like them and some cities don't. So what we try and do is partner with cities that want grade separations to happen. One of the things that works, one of the things that work in favor for San Mateo County is in their half-cent sales tax measure, they actually have a specific grade separation pot, it's identified for grade separations, and that local sales tax money is used to leverage either state or federal monies to make those grade separations happen. We do not have an equivalent in Santa Clara, it doesn't mean it can't happen, but that local dedicated source is not there, making it a little bit more challenging to get the funding for grade separations in Santa Clara County.
I appreciate that, because I think there's been a lot of discussion about why one county got it and another county didn't, what role BART played in this, and so forth. So simply to air that in public tonight while we're having this discussion. So thanks very much.
Just to add on, one of your other questions was about timing on High-Speed Rail and the blended service. So, currently in the 2014 business plan that High-Speed Rail has, the plan calls for the San Jose to San Francisco service to nominally start around 2026, 2027. So that's what's in the current business plan.
Most of us will be out of office by then.
Never know.
Councilmember Berman.
Thank you very much. So I'm sure you guys know from previous conversations and previous actions that the city has taken, that we support electrification of Caltrain, we've been big proponents of it, we've lobbied our legislators for it. It's something that, you know, for the myriad number of reasons that you explained, is a positive thing for the Bay Area and our community. But there are obviously some negative impacts that we've discovered that we have concerns about. And my understanding from your presentation tonight is that, Caltrain's position is that electrification will have a negative impact on three at-grade crossings in Palo Alto in terms of the time it takes, the level of service for those intersections. But that full mitigation of these impacts, which would mean grade separations at these three intersections, is cost prohibitive for Caltrain, and therefore, Caltrain won't even attempt to mitigate these impacts at all, is my understanding. I want to make sure that I've got that correct.
So, we, do you want to?
Yeah, let me, so, there are, so I'm going to, it's actually a little bit different, it's going to sound like I'm wordsmithing, but I'm not trying to. So, there is, what is a SEQA commitment, because it's been identified as a significant impact, and that we're required by SEQA to identify a mitigation that's feasible.
But you guys are saying that SEQA doesn't apply?
So this is the second part. So when we took this item to our board for adoption last week, the direction that staff got from the JPB was, given that there are these impacts, let's work outside of SEQA, because we're partners, and let's try and figure out what the ongoing efforts can be to address these issues.
Okay.
So, we're not turning away, we're here, all the cities are here. So where there are impacts, we're committed to, and we've been directed by the board, to meet with staff and figure out what additional things that we can work with the city on.
And I appreciate that, but that's a lot of words without any real, I mean, if you're saying that SEQA doesn't apply, which you guys are claiming, you know, kind of at the last minute is the case, then, you know, that's, there's no guarantee that anything will actually happen on that front, right? I mean, it's, you're pledging to do your best, but there's nothing in this document that says that there'll be any mitigation for those impacts.
Yeah, we, what it says, you know, regardless of the STB, you know, we went through the full SEQA process to get to this and made findings in accordance. At Meadow and Churchill and Charleston, because they're intersections right at, you've got a light, you've got a crossing, and they're right next to each other, it's a very constrained situation. And so, we had Farren Peers, who's a highly qualified traffic consultant, look at all the affected intersections, and where they could identify something that was a small geometric fix or signalization, we adopted mitigation, including up at Sand Hill and El Camino in Palo Alto, we have mitigation that can address the impact at that location. Fortunately, that's not right up against it, which is the most difficult thing to mitigate. Because working with the geometry is very difficult, because things are turning right after they cross the thing. And so you get these queues that are very hard to manage. So as a result, their determination was that we couldn't find one that would be feasible without widening Alma or grade separation, and that would be cost prohibitive for, so the determination wasn't really to do with the STB side. I do appreciate your comment that, you know, right now, we have not adopted any mitigation through this process, so, you know, that part I do appreciate.
And so, you know, grade separations, you know, Caltrain doesn't have the ability to fund the full thing, but does that mean, you know, does Caltrain have the option or legal ability to provide partial mitigation for the impacts? For example, including planning and engineering costs for possible ways to eliminate the at-grade crossings? I mean, I understand you can't do the full $150 million, or whatever the total cost is, but does that mean that you guys can't provide partial mitigation?
So, the mitigation as identified is what was adopted by the board. I think where, I think where we can establish an effective relationship between the JPB and City of Palo Alto is the type of relationship we had built with the City of San Bruno and the one we're building with San Mateo, City of San Mateo. And what that relationship is outside of this project, it's a true partnership in trying to figure out how to build a sufficient funding plan to make the project happen. While yes, it's not in the mitigation, it is the pattern of the JPB to partner with cities that are poised and ready with their constituents to tackle that task. And while it's difficult to get the money, we can make it happen, a few at a time. We've got over 40 at-grade crossings, and so I think the more we can build that relationships, we can have mechanisms like memorandum of understanding or agreements where we try and tackle issues. So, I do want to be clear that the mitigation as is has been adopted, so it's not, we're not here to see how it can be revised, but with grade separations and other city efforts, there's a way to move forward with the JPB, and we do that with a lot of our constituents along the corridor.
And that's encouraging to hear, and I know other colleagues have questions and comments. You know, I think we're looking for that, and I think we felt a little bit surprised by what was adopted in the EIR, and, you know, we've been partners with Caltrain for years, since long before I got elected on council, and we'll be working with, you know, folks in Santa Clara County to try to get additional funding for Caltrain. You know, we made that clear last year, excuse me, in regards to the potential sales tax measure. So, we know that it benefits us as much as you, as much as lots of folks on the peninsula. We just, you know, it seemed a little one-sided, and, you know, want to make sure that, you know, we do have a partnership moving forward that is beneficial for everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember DeVois.
Hi, thanks for coming in. I have three questions, hopefully the first one's pretty quick, it's really just a curiosity question, but electrification stops at San Jose, I assume that's because of the expense of continuing to, Gilroy was too high, but what's the frequency of connections between the electric and diesel going further south?
Right now, there's three trains, what, three trains coming north, three trains going south, and obviously, there'll be an opportunity, in 2020, we'd be operating both diesel and electric on the route, so some of those would likely, we haven't done all the planning for the schedule, but they would continue all the way to San Francisco, so you'd still have some of them mixed. In the future, when it was fully electrified, then you'd do a transfer likely at Deardon or Tamian. An important feature south is Caltrain only owns the corridor to just south of the Tamian Station. Union Pacific owns it to the south of that, and they kind of frown on electrifying their route.
Okay, thanks, I was just curious. So we've gotten a lot of comments from citizens about grade separation, and I think we need to determine if we can either trench or get grade crossings. And the recent study we did showed that our price was halved if Caltrain would agree to a 2% slope instead of a 1% slope, and it made it almost nearly equivalent with grade crossings. So the grade crossings estimate that we got was about $320 million, plus would require seizing 39 parcels, remnant domain, versus trenching, which came out to about $488 million. And so would Caltrain assist Palo Alto in approving a 2% grade if we were to be able to find sources of funding for a trench?
So, I'm going to start with what our standard is, it's not a requirement, our general standard is 1%, and there's flexibility in that when people ask for a variance from it, we will consider it on a specific project-by-project basis, kind of depends where it is and what the impacts are. So we have a process for that. If the design gets to that point where we have something to review, we will send it to our technical team for their consideration.
I mean, is going from 1% to 2% dramatic, or is that something you've approved in the past?
It may or may not be. Also, in this quarter, we have freight, they're the heavier trains, and so it does have impacts, whether it's material or significant, is to be determined. I know some projects where we have provided variance and some projects where we haven't. So, we've just got to get very site-specific and then take a look. But we don't start with a no, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Yep.
And last question, our local paper said that, you know, these improvements are great, but they do come with this bitter pill, the traffic impacts at these three intersections, and... And in the EIR, there was a little bit of discussion about trenching and saying you'd have to relocate the electrical, you know, if it went in at grade and then it trenched later. But it didn't really say anything about the cost or construction challenges. I mean, once electrification goes in, does that prohibit trenching in the future? And do you have any idea how expensive that would be to adjust?
Well, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a cost item. It's not technically, technically you can, you know, relocate. You have a operating railroad that you're putting a trench in, so you have to figure out how to do all that at the same time. But in essence, you could lose the investment in the, you know, the at-grade electrification, you'd lose that straight off, so it'd be sunk cost. And so, but it's not technically infeasible, it's really a financial issue.
Right, okay, thank you.
If, may I add just one thing? So with all of the cities along the corridor, there's a common interest in grade separation. And we get, we get benefits out of that. Let's say regardless of what happens to the city, we get benefits out of that. We know that there's added benefits because it deals and addresses with some of the traffic, which is very important, which is why we try and form these partnerships. This is not the focus of what should drive us to have the right partnerships to make it happen, because we have a lot of grade separations to do. But I do want to make it clear that it's not this electrification project that's gotten us to the situation at some of these crossings and the traffic conditions. Many of them are already bad. They would be as bad maybe, to what extent, I can't tell you because we didn't do the analysis, but even without our electrification project, if we were not to do that, because of the regional growth anticipated and projected, many of these same crossings would be getting quite bad. So I just want to be clear about our transparency about how much we contribute to that situation, what is attributed by current conditions as well as the regional growth projected, and really that it's incumbent on all of us as we all contribute to the situation to figure out how to make these grade separations work.
Yeah, and just to add one thought on that, what the EIR says about that is that the cause of the traffic is not due to electrification, it's due to increased number of trains. And that the stations due to the increased number of riders. Hopefully, they're all coming by bike or walking, but some are going to drive. And so that's really what's causing it. So if you expand the system, whether it's diesel or whether it's electrification or something else, that's a function of increasing service, not electrification.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you, so just following up on that. So what we're really saying is that an extra train per hour, the gates going down further in the backup queue to cross is what's causing the traffic to be a problem.
At the grade crossings.
At the grade crossings.
Yeah, and at the stations with more riders, more traffic accessing the station.
So besides that, were there other traffic impacts on Alma?
That's the, that's the cause.
I mean, that's the cause, right?
Those are the two causes of our traffic.
Of our traffic.
So.
Built on top of.
Yeah, on top of the no-project traffic, of course.
So what I also heard you say in response to Councilmember Berman was that, you know, we want to partner with the city on sort of an informal basis, I guess, outside of the EIR and work with us to do things. And is that correct?
Yeah, and I would say it could vary from informal to formal. So I will, this is not to glorify City of San Mateo, but what they have done is they have gone through a planning process with their local constituents. And they've built up support from city council as well as the local stakeholders, saying we want to grade separate 25th. What that does for us is we say, oh, great, the local folks are all lined up. So now we can really work with them on the technical and operational engineering side. And with that, with that contribution from both ends, we have been sitting down to figure out, okay, given that we have a sales tax leverage with the San Mateo Measure A, what can we do to leverage money from the state or somebody else? So is that formalized in the memorandum of understanding? It is not. If the city requested it, we would consider it and we would bring it to the board, but we could really determine sort of how we want that dialogue to happen.
So in terms of putting that sort of working together sense, I was concerned about the, you know, the PS5 location. There was the Green Meadow location, then there were some alternative locations that got into the EIR. And it seemed that the alternative locations were just as acceptable. It was unclear to me why the location that was unacceptable to Palo Alto and frankly made a lot of people very unhappy was still in the EIR. And what I got back when I asked those questions was, well, we just left it in the EIR, but, you know, we wanted to have the flexibility. It wasn't very comforting. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you really want a partnership with the city, I mean, I think, you know, clearly not choosing the location that is very upsetting to our citizens would be a good first step in that.
So, uh, it was much more thoughtful than that. We don't like to make the cities angry because that doesn't make our job any easier. So there were a handful of cities that had a clear recommendation for which paralleling station they wanted, including Palo Alto. It was very clear, there was one that you did not want, and then we actually added in our environmental document, staff recommended option. The reason they are all in there, because we did a first-level screen of all of the traction power facilities and they are all feasible, so that's great. In order to pick one, there needs to be a second layer of due diligence that needs to be done to make sure that selected one is going to work. Otherwise, we're making a false promise or setting ourselves up for premature commitment. So we're going through that process and it is our intent, and we'll be coming back to the city. We have told our technical team what is the preferred TPS location, which is the recommended one that we got from staff. Short of any fatal flaw of that second level of due diligence, we'll be coming back to city staff, hopefully with that recommendation. But we need that additional time to complete it.
So how long do you think that'll take?
I'm sorry.
How long will that take?
It's not very far. I would say in the next two to three weeks, because it will need to be identified in a request for proposal to our contractors and we would have needed to select all of the locations of the traction power facilities.
So the EIR has now been certified. So I mean, the process with the EIR is over barring some sort of litigation. So when do you anticipate breaking ground?
So construction will begin in approximately 2016. And then we'll be under about a five-year construction period with revenue service in about 2020, 2021. It will not be secured, though, until we have a contract with the builders. We anticipate having that contract in place by the fall of 2015.
Okay. And in your notes here somewhere, it said, talked about noise and it talked about contribute the fair share to cumulative noise mitigation at certain locations, quiet zones. We're obviously talking about possibly doing a quiet zone. Does that mean there's money available to us on this at all, or what does that imply?
So for Caltrain, so in the EIR, it identifies those locations where compared to existing conditions, this project would contribute. So it's not everywhere along the route. And so it's a, it's a number of select locations. There's a handful of them. I don't recall offhand if any of those are in Palo Alto or not. If they were, it would be proportionate to our contribution. Because on its own, the Caltrain project doesn't result in significant impacts. In most places, actually lowers the noise by just a little. And there's a few small increases, but they're below the threshold of significance. In the cumulative, when you add X number of trains for high-speed rail and maybe some more freight and maybe, you know, the coast daylighter, you have those cumulative impacts. So Caltrain would be obligated to contribute at those locations. So yes, that is, that would result in a financial commitment to the solution that's ultimately done. But to get that cumulative, you're going to have to have the contributions of the other parties.
And I actually had one question for our Director of Transportation, Jaime Rodriguez. So Jaime, what I heard from the folks from Caltrain was that besides grade separation or trenching, there was no traffic mitigation on Alma that would be helpful in this regard. Do we agree? Or is there actually some mitigations we would have liked?
I think from the standpoint of what this specific EIR is saying is that the traffic that's being generated, like you said, is being generated from the standpoint that there's an extra train crossing being dropped down. And so from the standpoint of additional mitigation, you know, other than significant grade separation, there isn't too much more that we can do. There's things we can do to work together, do more traffic operation, to try to develop more signal timing. We've exhausted those types of efforts in the past. We'd love people to partner with Caltrain to see if that's something we can revisit and see if there's different issues that can be created by putting more minds together. We haven't had those discussions, but that's something that we could do as part of developing an MOU on wanting to work together to implement different solutions.
All right, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Just a couple of questions. I guess the freight issue. I know that historically has been a problem, that the freight prefers or needs the diesel-powered trains. And that will continue through this, so the late-at-night noise of the diesels will be with us. Is that through 2040, or is there a long-term solution?
Well, with this project, so as we identified in the EIR, we don't think that there's a need to temporally separate, which is to separate by time, the freight and the electrified trains, that they can operate at the same time on the route. What that means is that the timing that freight is doing today, they can do tomorrow. And most of them start in the early evening and then on their outrun and then come back late at night, as you know. So that would nominally be the same, rather than forcing them all to be in the middle of the night, which would be worse. So about the same, well, not necessarily any better.
But that's a permanent agreement, that the freight will continue to move by diesel?
Yes, separate from our electrification project, we have a trackage rights agreement with UP and we are obligated to support their service.
Yeah, okay. Secondly, you mentioned San Mateo County is a little different because they have a dedicated tax for at-grade crossings and Santa Clara does not. Now, Santa Clara does have a transportation tax, but we find every couple of years, we're fighting to get more of that for Caltrain and grade separation, but it ends up going to BART. Now, why isn't a Caltrain a more active partner with us in those biennial negotiations with the county? Shouldn't you be with us in the trenches, rather than having us fight the county?
That sounds like a lot of fun. I mean, we do need to figure out what to do different if necessary. So the JPB, as you know, is made up of VTA representing Santa Clara County. And so when VTA is there, they not only wear their VTA hat, but they also wear the JPB hat as they're a member, one of the three members of the JPB. And so we have been coordinating that way, but in terms of, you know, do you need our staff to get into the ring and participate in that discussion? I think if it's helpful, we can and we would do it in coordination with VTA.
Yeah, I guess if you were committed in any way to help with grade crossing, you would have an incentive to be there with us. But when you say, oh, there's nothing we can do, you're eliminating your incentives to help us.
And I will say this, is while we're very respectful of the role that VTA plays, and I have to highlight that, when the Silicon Valley Leadership Group was attempting to put a ballot measure to deal with various types of improvements, we were in there with VTA talking about grade separations for Santa Clara as one of multiple elements that would be included. So we are participating in the discussion, but if you see a need for a different way to do it, we are open to engaging in a different way.
Okay, I guess when that issue comes, we might think of ways that you could help us. You mentioned that once this goes in, there will be a cost if grade crossing comes after Will you pick up that cost? Are you committing to help us with that cost?
Our fair share to be determined with the other people that contribute to that impact. And that is what our environmental document signs up for. And it's committed through the environmental document, which was adopted by the board. So that commitment is formalized with the JPB.
Yeah, the cumulative mitigation notes for traffic and possibly noise, noise could be solved by quiet zones or grade separations, it's a couple of different ways, but traffic in some of these locations, that's the only solution. So it does talk about fair share at the point that there's sufficient funding that can be identified. It's not something that Caltrain on its own can bring to the table. So it does, it does talk about that, but then it does depend on that cumulative body coming together.
Yeah, I guess that's the first time I've heard you mention fair share, so that is an important commitment that we can remember.
Yes.
I guess finally, just a last note. I mean, we are partners, have been for a long time. We have been very aggressive in encouraging our employers to use Caltrain as much as possible, to get TDM measures, to increase ridership, to work with Stanford, to get ridership. That we truly are partners in this. And that's why it is so disturbing to, for you to come and say we reserve the right to claim exemption from CEQA. I mean, CEQA is our way of having a dialogue over issues and mitigations. And so your board reserving the right indicates that we are less partners for the future. So you might, you know, go back to your board and say, one of our good partners is upset.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yep, there we go. So if I, if I can sort of summarize the gist of the issue that we're talking about, and again, we're talking about grade separations and traffic, is that the problem that we jointly face as a partnership is that regional transit is not a train or a bus, it's a system of all the above. And the problem that we jointly face, and there's a lot of good reasons to do the electrification, I mean, lots of good reasons to do it. The problem we face is that there's enough funding to upgrade this piece of the system, but not enough to fix the mess it'll cause elsewhere. Is that basically a summary of this?
Say that second part again, there's money for this project, but...
There's enough, there's enough money, enough funding to improve the train piece of it, but not enough to fix the traffic problems it'll cause elsewhere.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, okay. And so that's our challenge as partners to resolve.
Yes, yes.
So I had one quick question is that, as you point out, the issue is the train frequency, not the electrification itself. And the forecast is that we'll be running six trains per hour both ways? Is that in the long term, or is it six trains for, until 2018, and then seven by 2020 and eight by, and so forth? What's the outlook for that?
So for Caltrain, it would be the six. And the next strategy we're trying to think through is creating longer trains, so we can add cars to the trains and create more seats and capacity for folks. What will be coming onto our corridor is up to four high-speed rail trains per peak hour per direction.
Okay.
In addition to our six. It can't be more than that because the capacity is capped at that, which is what our evaluation showed.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Councilmember Burton.
Thanks for the presentation. Let me go over a couple of things that have been touched on by colleagues and some fresh First, that the city supports electrification and has significant concerns on the environmental impact report. And both things can exist simultaneously. And those concerns are absent additional mitigation agreements that we don't yet have in hand. Second, there's really been a process concern. You went through and summarized the process for the EIR up until now, but then what we had was the final EIR came to us in early December and then was just already adopted by your board. And so there was just over a 30-day period, and that 30-day period occurred during the holidays, when most local government agencies don't conduct regular meetings. And for example, here in Palo Alto, we heard this on, I think, December 12th, and this is the first regular meeting we've had. We had an election of new officers, but first regular meeting that we've had since then. And Mr. Hackman actually spoke at your board meeting, I believe, asked that the board delay certification of the EIR to give local partner entities ample time to bring their certification of the EIR to give local partner entities ample time to bring their comments to their governing bodies, and the JPB declined to do so. So that may not have been your decision, I don't know what staff's recommendations were, and to my knowledge, we didn't have Caltrain staff come to support of the MEBR agencies to say, gee, we didn't really give them a functional 30 days to be able to respond. We, as a government agency, have gone through this ourselves, and typically, if we have an EIR that falls over the holidays, we will extend it. And I think that's a real disappointment, that Caltrain didn't do that. So then there's now a 30-day period in which we decide on whether we take any recourse on the concerns that we've put in the draft EIR comments and the final EIR comments. I think what we would really like to do, and Mr. Hackman, I think, stated this at your board meeting, is to quickly get a better agreement on other mitigation alternatives that we think might be effective, not to fully mitigate these impacts, but to do more than what the EIR document has done. And so let me just go into what those categories are. First, Marion, you had said that all the cities have concerns about grade crossings, but I believe the EIR identified seven intersections where it's significant impacts, and those were all treated as unavoidable, is that correct?
For project impacts.
Pardon me?
For project direct impacts.
Yeah.
For cumulative, the number's higher, I believe.
Yeah, for project, and out of those seven, three are in Palo Alto?
That's correct.
Okay. So to say all the cities up and down the corridor have concerns, we have almost half of those project-impacted intersections out of the entire system. So we stand out. And part of why we stand out is because we have a different physical environment next to the tracks than many of the other cities. And this has been one of the things that we've pushed all the way going back to our high-speed rail alternatives analysis, was to get the parties to recognize that all circumstances aren't physically equal. And this is where we had, a big part of this was context-sensitive solutions, where we actually look at the context and come up with solutions based upon that context. And so one of the things that I would like to see is for Caltrain to recognize, as a policy, that there are different physical settings at different grade crossings throughout the system, and that those different settings and conditions may in fact involve ultimately different solutions. And that may sound redundant, but it's a big deal. And it's a difference between whether the transportation bodies of the JPB, the MTC, the high-speed rail, and others basically take a one-size-must-fit-all mindset towards solutions to these problems, or whether we look at solutions that are necessary and appropriate, depending on the settings. So that recognition is one thing that I would be looking for, and I think it's really crucial for subsequent conversations to be meaningful and successful. There's another mitigation potential, and that is that the level of train service actually affects the amount of traffic that we have on our parallel arterials. In this case, most of all, it's Alma, that's the arterial that's impacted. And we have in Palo Alto, strong service at University, and very weak service at California Avenue, and very weak service at a train station that is effectively a South Palo Alto train station, San Antonio. And those stations, CalAV has a high boarding despite, what, around one train per hour most of the day. And is that correct, if I recall? All right. And there's a huge demand for service at CalAV. There's a large demand and going to be immensely growing at San Antonio, not to mention that CalAV first and San Antonio first and CalAV second are the closest stations for the massive tech employee ridership that potentially would be for Google and other employers in the North Mountain View employment base. And so additional trains on those stations would have their own mitigations to the impacts created by the system. Now, I know that you have plans to increase train service with electrification, but what we, I think, would like to see is that the impacts of the electrification go into the consideration of the level of additional service that's provided. And second, that that improvement in service needn't wait until 2021, when you have electrification. So if between now and 2021, we have a commitment from Caltrain in the near term to begin the process of improving service at CalAV in San Antonio, that could help mitigate the impacts. Another area that I frankly don't recall how much we addressed in the EIR is safety and security of the tracks. And we already have issues with that. They will be compounded by additional trains, and compounded by faster trains, and frankly, compounded by quieter trains. It's a paradoxical impact there. So I think that we would like to see that commitment toward improved track security and safety, and once again, that doesn't need to await electrification, that's something that could happen now. I'd also like to just touch on, so that everybody understands this high-speed rail notion. One, despite comments that some may make, there's no certainty that high-speed rail will come up the peninsula, no certainty it'll get to San Jose. But if it does, those trains travel at 120 miles per hour, correct?
In our corridor, they will not exceed 110.
110, thank you. And the Caltrain trains are going to be 79 miles an hour, is that right?
We will be 79 until they get here, and then we will function within the bracket of 110 for both systems.
And in your noise analysis, have you modeled the difference between 110 mile an hour trains and 79, or whatever?
The cumulative analysis did, yes.
Okay. And if high-speed rail does not come to the peninsula, then presumably eventually, Caltrain will expand the number of trains to meet the demand. And I think that that's an inevitability, that that demand will be there, and frankly, if high-speed rail does come, I think we'll have a demand crisis, given that we won't have adequate ability to meet the ridership demand that we'll have. The train lengthening will be very important, and it'll buy us a good number of years, but not buy us a good number of decades. And so if high-speed rail doesn't happen, I assume that we're going to see an increase in the number of Caltrain trains that would eventually occur. If you kicked up the number of Caltrain trains to eight or 10, would that trigger a new EIR or a revised EIR?
Well, I'll just say environmental instead of CEQA versus NEPA because of the STV. It depends whether anything has to be built. Because there's a, under CEQA, there's an exemption for increasing train service. That's longstanding, that doesn't exist for high-speed rail, it's just existed for a long time. So you'd have to go through it, you know. With resolution of the STV preemption issue, then you'd have to look at, okay, how that shook out. And the same thing under NEPA, NEPA, there are categorical exclusions for improvements that are entirely within a disturbed right-of-way, but there are some exceptions to those. So it's hard to say what it would be.
So I'm glad you mentioned this CEQA exemption for additional train service, because that hasn't really, I don't know, is that in your report?
No, it's not, because we have to do physical improvements in order to provide the service that we're providing, therefore, separate from the whole STV issue, we would be triggered into CEQA. Because we're doing physical improvements, it doesn't cover that.
But I think that throughout the entire process, the public and probably most public agencies don't know that increased trains would themselves be exempt from CEQA analysis. I don't think that had been disclosed.
Yeah, it's not applicable to our project, but it would be, all train agencies in the state do employ that categorical exemption.
Yeah, so that means that we could go up to 10 trains an hour, and you don't have to mitigate it.
So I hate speculating, but just to contain our concern, so when we did our simulation run, and we tested up to eight trains, this was in combination with high-speed rails, it's a little bit different, we were able to accommodate up to eight, but then when we looked at increasing it to 10, we would have to build what are additional tracks, and that, those tracks would be outside of the right-of-way, and that would most likely trigger some type of environmental review. So there's a cap in which what we can do, it can't trigger the physical improvements, and beyond eight, you know, based on those findings, I would extrapolate that we would need some level of track improvement.
Yeah, but I don't know that that would trigger any obligation for mitigations at those grade crossings.
Well, we'd have to go through the environmental process, analyze it, and see what the impacts are first, and then wherever mitigation's appropriate and applicable, that's what we would recommend, but it's really hard to have this hypothetical conversation, because we don't know exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, well, I don't think we'll resolve that tonight. Let's see. So the final thing that one of my colleagues, or one or more of my colleagues spoke about is the role of Caltrain in future grade separation design and planning. And you spoke a number of times where individual cities have identified grade separations, and you are a willing partner with that. What we've been talking about is a role that is modestly above reacting to those city initiatives. And that is Caltrain taking on a shared responsibility in the preliminary design of a system that would eventually have grade separations, and not treat grade separations as merely city responsibilities, to which Caltrain will then react in a positive way if a city initiates. But the Caltrain accepts a shared ownership of the responsibility, because in fact, it is the increase in Caltrain service levels that are a primary driver in the need for the grade separations. And so we, I think, would like to see a greater commitment in Caltrain toward the planning and design of that in collaboration with the cities, but not kind of a passive reaction merely. And so those are areas that I think would be appropriate. Thanks.
Councilmember Welbach.
Thank you very much for your report and for your time here today. Since we are already over time on this item, I appreciate Madam Mayor and colleagues' patience while I go through just a couple of questions. I'll try to keep them very quick, so we can get on to the next item. Kind of building on what Councilmember Burton said before me, and I think I agree with just about everything he said, and I think that there's, and I don't want to speak for others on the council or others in the community, but I think there's a growing consensus that grade separation is going to be necessary. You know, as we all know, Caltrain's almost maxed out. There's already a separation of our community from one side to the other because of the tracks, because of the traffic and waiting at the stoplights. There's already a tremendous safety problem at Caltrain. As Councilmember Burton pointed out, there are maybe other ways to address that without grade separation, but that's certainly an important consideration. The demand, as you've pointed out, thank you, Ms. Lee, is going to increase even if we do nothing, even if electrification does not move forward. And as Caltrain gets maxed out, that's just going to put more and more cars onto the road. So this is really critical, and this is very timely. Despite all of the concerns that we do have about the process and doing this over the holidays, it is still important that we do move quickly on this. On the issue of building a stronger partnership, beyond what you've already said, I just have three questions, but the first is, could you perhaps articulate a bit more about what steps we can take to make sure that we can build an effective collaborative partnership with you moving forward on planning, on timing, and working together to get creative and effective on funding? Potentially for grade separation, if we decide as a community, we do want to move forward.
So I am staff, so please take it for what it is.
Sure.
We're having much discussion that's at the board level, so I'm getting very uncomfortable, like I almost have to go to the restroom, but that's, we'll just, so every city, we've got 17 cities, they're going to have to work very closely, not just on electrification, but it's really the segment where we are electrifying. They all have a different style about them. I'm clearly hearing from here that you desire a stronger proactive approach from the JPB, and a more formalized one, because right now, what you have is the word of our board members, which was stated at a JPB meeting. I think there can be much space for getting together and talk about if something like the MOU is appropriate. That's a commitment at the council level and the JPB board level, as to what our common goals might be and how to move forward. If the informality is not okay, then it's, in the theme of every city is kind of different, we got to figure out how to sort of customize our process for that. What I can't commit to you is a blanket approach to all of the cities, because they are so different. So I think where the follow-up discussions could be had is, the mitigation is there, so we don't have to worry about it, in terms that the board has committed to it. In terms of any additional joint efforts to be done, I think it'd be important for staff to get together first, to identify what those things are, and I think I'm hearing a pretty clear message today. And then we're going to have to elevate it to the policymakers as to how we want to formalize the process, if that is the best way to go. We haven't ventured there before, sort of at a planning level, where things do get formalized, is when there's a capital project, and there's an agreement to coordinate on construction and things to that sort. So I think it's fairly new, but if we want to formalize a planning process, this is not a commitment from the board, but at the staff level, I can't see a reason why not together and explore that and see what we can do.
Thank you. So my next question is, and this was mentioned, at least in passing earlier, just want to kind of come back to it just for a second. If we do decide to do grade separation and electrification is moving forward, how much sense does it make to do them simultaneously, rather than splitting them? It seems that it would be cost-effective to do them simultaneously. Are there any downsides to doing them simultaneously, or any upsides that I'm not imagining to doing them separately?
So a lot of it is TBD, only because we have an objective to get electrification done by 2020, 21. So when there's any projects, whether it be grade separation or track, whatever the case may be, we look at to see if there's construction windows to allow that project to happen, given that objective. If it works, of course we would, because we want to minimize changing it later. If it doesn't work, then we have a policy-level discussion to be had, which is, which project is more important? Because one will impact the timeframe of the other. So I can't give you a blanket statement, but if all the ducks were lined up, and we had a real project and a funding plan, we would have to look at it compared to the objectives of the electrification project, and see how they may benefit each other or negatively impact each other.
Great, thank you, and thank you for everybody keeping that in mind. Great, thank you, and thank you for everybody keeping that in mind as we move forward. And there's, my last question, and I do appreciate your patience, my last question is, how much flexibility might we have, and this is going to be a hard one, I'm sure, to pin down right now, but again, just kind of wanted to bring it up for consideration, how much flexibility might we have in construction windows? And one of the reasons I ask this is, especially if we're talking about doing some grade separation, or potentially trenching along the Caltrain corridor in part or all of Palo Alto, that would likely have very significant impacts on traffic on Alma in particular, during those construction periods, during that construction window. We're going to be talking about it a little bit today. There might be some work going on on El Camino, of a variety of options, that might lead, especially during any construction on El Camino, for bus rapid transit, especially during that construction, that might push a lot of traffic onto Alma. And doing those projects simultaneously would be a mess that you could describe in a lot of words that I won't use tonight. So I'm just curious how much, or if we can think about, especially moving forward, how much flexibility we might have in the construction windows, or how much, if, especially if something else is going on, on the parallel corridor of El Camino, how much we can coordinate timing to reduce the impact during that period? Thanks.
So I will join you in not speculating with you, but I will absolutely tell you, it is a big, big deal. And the reason our revenue service date, it got pushed out. Originally, we were targeting 2019. The reason it got pushed out eight to 24 months is because of lack of construction windows, because the other thing we have to do is keep revenue service in place. The fifty, sorry, the almost 60,000 riders, we have to keep a certain level of revenue service in place. So it will be a big deal, it will be a humongous challenge, but we will look at it.
And the mitigation requires it.
One question, one comment, and thank you for coming this evening. Having to do with the alternate locations for the PS5, what's your timing, do you think, on being able to determine that one of those other locations is equally adequate, and moving it away from the Green Meadow location?
Our staff, what staff is trying to do is come back to you in about two to three weeks to say that alternative location is good. That's our goal. We're just waiting for that final due diligence to make sure there's no fatal flaw.
And at that time, we can, you know, look at entering into an MOU, or something of that nature?
Yeah, one of the things that's coming, so there's two things to shore up that decision. One is, at the February JPB meeting, we will have a discussion about the RFP that we're going to release for the electrification project. That RFP will be identifying those traction power facilities, so assuming all goes well, completing their due diligence, assuming no fatal flaw, and we're able to choose the city-recommended one, that is what would be in the RFP that the board would approve to be released. So that's one level of assurance. The other one that's coming your way, which we haven't talked about, is we anticipate with each of the seventeen cities and the three counties that we're directly impacting, we will have some sort of a memorandum of understanding or an agreement. We have to, because we're going to be coordinating through your jurisdiction. And so while there will be a baseline that's common to all, there'll be some level of customization, again, for each city. So that is another venue in which I think we can explore to talk about these additional coordination matters.
Thank you for that. And then my final thing is a comment, actually. Just, I would request that the minutes of this meeting actually be put into some kind of formal document, so that it's a formal communication to the Caltrain board to represent, you know, our feelings and opinions and views on this matter, and so to express our continued concerns and hopes on how the Caltrain board in the City of Palo Alto can reach some positive outcomes. And the reason that I say this at this point in time is because, even though these concerns have been raised before, most if not all of them, these are our comments still post-FEIR certification. And so I think it's important to have these on record there. So, you know, along with our support for Caltrain electrification, we do still have these ongoing concerns, so I would ask that, you know, that be put into place and forwarded on to Caltrain staff, oh, excuse me, Caltrain staff or Caltrain board. With that, we have, I think, six speakers at last count, and you have three minutes, but if you would, if you could actually curtail your comments to two minutes, that would help us, as we are already 40 minutes over in time. So the first speaker is Stephen Rosenbloom, to be followed by Herb Borack, and to help us move along too, if you're the next speaker, if you could move forward, that would really be great assistance.
Hi, councilmembers. I've addressed the council several times in the past, and I'd like to say hello to all the new members that don't know me. I live on Santa Rita Avenue in Palo Alto, and I'm a Caltrain and a BART user. I'd just like to remind people of stuff they probably already know, that BART was built in the 70s, and because of the lack of foresight of the voters, they, it didn't come to Santa Clara County. So as things developed, BART now comes to the San Francisco Airport, and it will come to San Jose, and even though Santa Clara County voted for BART, because San Mateo County didn't, it didn't come here. And so what I see the role of Caltrain being is to fill the BART gap. We have a gap between San Jose and San Francisco, basically, or San Jose and the airport, that needs to be filled by a grade-separated electrified system that looks like BART. I think that's what a rail mass transit system looks like. And this requires vision. It's a project that's going to be with us for 100 years, it's not just a decade or a few years. So it pays to figure things out and do them right, rather than just knee-jerk and say, oh, we've got some money, let's just take some step that we'll have to partially undo later. I was really encouraged by the very excellent questions that councilmembers asked in the dialogue with Caltrain, and it gives me some hope that we can reach some conclusion on grade separation, because I think, as council has indicated, that is a really crucial issue for Palo Alto, and it's actually covered up by the fact that the downtimes are over 120 seconds. They don't even say what the number is, it could be five minutes. But it's an F-grade, which is the worst grade, and as you mentioned, three of the seven crossings in Palo Alto are the ones that are impacted. This is a one-and-a-half-billion-dollar project. It gives us 22 more trains a day, but at the cost of all this gate downtime, increased safety impacts, increased horn noise, which is the main problem, the main noise problem that people that live along the right-of-way complain about, and that won't be reduced at all, because the horn level is required by the railroad administration to be at 96 dB, so it's going to stay the same when these new trains come in. So I think the council has given excellent direction to the Caltrain personnel, that they need to work with us and come up with a way of mitigating these grade-crossing impacts, and my preference would be by trenching, and I think the Hatch-Martin-McDonald study has shown that that's a good possibility, and we just need to figure out how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Borack, to be followed by Adina Levin, and again, if you could move forward when your name is called, it would really help. Thank you.
Mayor Holman, Vice Mayor Schmidt, and councilmembers, this is the stage in the EIR process where parties who participated in the process can make a decision whether or not the EIR is adequate, and has adequately responded to your comments, because you have an opportunity to file a lawsuit. Instead, we're having a discussion of having partnerships, as if the purpose of the EIR process at this time is to ignore that leverage that this council and other parties have to have an equal partnership. I don't believe that we can have meaningful and successful solutions unless we have a negotiation between equal partners. And we're not equal partners if Caltrain has a certified EIR and project approval that are not being challenged, because they really don't have to do any of the things that have been talked about this evening. Also, I don't think that we can have a successful and meaningful agreement and solutions if we only do one thing, such as the paralleling station opposite the Green Meadow neighborhood, and ignore all of the other items that Councilmember Burt has mentioned in his comments. You have a history from Caltrain board of how they act, first of all, encouraging us to participate in the Sequo process, and then saying at the very end that they want to claim that they're exempt from that process. And then after former Mayor Shepard had sent a letter with comments on the final EIR, having the last slide that you saw here, and instead of saying forthrightly that they didn't make any changes based on those comments they received on December 31st, they simply repeated, in response to those comments, the text of the document that Mayor Shepard was commenting about. So given that history, it seems to me the appropriate action to take to meet the various things that you need to talk with Caltrain about in the partnership, is for the council to meet in closed session, and decide what is the best strategy to have to get the city's needs met. Because otherwise, once that time for a lawsuit passes, and there's no lawsuit filed, all the things that you heard from Caltrain staff this evening will just be ignored by the Caltrain board. Thank you.
Thank you. Adina Levin, to be followed by Marty Zach.
Good evening, councilmembers, Adina Levin, friends of Caltrain, and glad to see this project moving forward, and hearing the council talk about addressing the issues in a spirit of partnership. Caltrain Electrification will help address the city's concerns about quality of life and traffic and parking, and the strategy that it's taking on in terms of transportation demand management, to get people out of cars and into transit, and provide things like shuttles and transit passes and so on, to help more people do so. So it's very complimentary, and there are issues, and glad to hear the issues are being discussed in a spirit of cooperation. I agree with the previous speaker about the importance of leverage, but disagree pretty strongly in terms of what that leverage entails. So part of the leverage in terms of getting money is, you know, litigation, for example, wouldn't create any additional money for grade separations, but working in partnership with other cities, Santa Clara County and other parts of the region, will. There's not, you know, half a billion dollars in the air, that's something that the city has leverage in. North County votes. Voting is leverage, to say, we will vote for something that includes the things that we need. And in addition, for Caltrain, vision is leverage. One of the things that people with arithmetic see is that Caltrain, these improvements will help keep up with the capacity needs, and additional improvements, including the level boarding and the longer trains, and leveraging more of the capacity on the corridor, will be needed. And to the extent that Caltrain can work with the employers and this entire, all the cities on the corridor, to paint that vision, that will help everyone work together to be able to raise the money to fulfill the vision, that will enable us to get the grade separations, the additional capacity on the corridor, and being able to double to triple the ridership. The ridership has doubled over the last decade, and I think we're going to need to plan to increase that ridership again going forward. So that vision is also leverage. Thank you very much for the consideration, and working together on solving the problems and setting the vision to get to where we need to go. Thank you.
And thank you. Marty Zach, to be followed by Vanessa Warheit.
Hello, city council, and members of Caltrain. I just want to briefly add my voice as a Stanford undergrad. I actually study urban studies and urban policy, so this stuff's of great interest to me. And of course, I'm a Caltrain rider, like so many other Stanford students, and I know we're not your constituents proper, but we are a major stakeholder here, and for so many of us who don't have cars, Caltrain electrification and modernization is a priority. And what I heard tonight was an agency very willing to work through these issues with you collaboratively, and I just want to urge, on behalf of the, I would say, large population of people who come through Palo Alto, live around Palo Alto, go to Stanford, who aren't car drivers, that the overwhelming benefits of Caltrain modernization, electrification are of enormous value to us, and I want to urge the council to move forward with all possible speed, as you continue to manage these issues, which I know are important for residents, but I just want to provide that voice in the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa Warheit, to be followed by Bob Moss, and then to be followed by Stephanie Munoz, our final speaker. Thank you for coming.
Hi, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. I just, my name's Vanessa Warheit, I'm a Palo Alto resident, and I'm a mother of a very patient nine-year-old waiting here. And I just want to remind everyone of the time-critical nature of electrifying Caltrain, and basically reiterate from a different point of view exactly what the former speaker said. We have a very narrow window of time to lower our greenhouse gas emissions. I was delighted to see the arrows going up and down in that slide that Caltrain showed us about greenhouse gas emission mitigation from this project, and I want to strongly encourage the council to do everything in their power to make sure that these issues of grade separation, as important as they are, do not hinder the timeline of implementing electrification as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by our last speaker, Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, and councilmembers. Some of the comments that, and questions that some of the councilmembers made, kind of inspired me to give you some information that you may not know in the detail. I drove to work for over 30 years, along either Meadow or Charleston, to and from work, and typically between 7:30 and 8:00 in the morning, and between 5:30 and 6:00 at night. Traffic on Meadow would frequently back up all the way to El Camino Way, because of all of the trains going through, so only a few cars could go through at each stoplight, green light. Increasing the number of trains is going to back up that traffic even more. People won't even be able to get onto El Camino Way, because they'll be backed up across El Camino. And the same thing's true of Charleston. When I went home on Charleston, I was off in two or three blocks from Alma, and I had to slowly go across the train tracks. Now, when there's an impact from a development, the logical thing is, you look at how you fix it, and if there's a logical, reasonable way to fix it, you do. Well, there's a logical way to fix it. It's called a grade separation. And when Caltrain says, oh, yeah, grade separations work, but we can't afford it, you guys pay it, uh-uh. They're causing the problem, they should pay to fix it. Now, I'm going to be generous and say the cities should be willing to pay 10% or 15% or 20% of the total cost, but if Caltrain causes a problem, and the additional train trips will cause a problem, if we know how to fix it, and we do know how to fix it, Caltrain should fix it. So I would urge you to do everything possible, including talking to our representatives in Congress and in the state assembly, and get them to twist Caltrain's arms, so that they fix the problems they are creating.
Thank you very much, Stephanie Munoz, and we have a, it looks like Rita Vehu.
Good evening, Mayor Holman, and other councilmembers, and especially the new councilmembers. I'm Stephanie Munoz. I'd like to echo what Herb said. I think Caltrain could solve the problem. It's the whole state that's supposed to be benefiting, and so why should Palo Alto, which is not that big a beneficiary from trains going through it and not stopping, why should Palo Alto take on such a heavy burden? But my other, my thoughts- But my other, my thoughts are, first of all, that the train service, even though it doubled, would still double disproportionately. Most, I believe, most of the ridership would be at the commute hours, in the morning going north, in the evening going south. And perhaps it might not be necessary to do all the grades as grade separated. Perhaps people would adapt if they could find that out ahead of time and they would know that they could go a couple of miles out of their way so that they would go to a place where there was a grade separation rather than wait 10 minutes, well, rather than wait several minutes for the train to pass and then another train to pass. What Councilmember Burt said fascinated me because it seems to me we really have to know that we're safe from the incursion of the high-speed rail going to San Francisco before we make any kind of grade separation plans. It makes a, you have to, it seems to me, you have to have grade separation. You just have to if you have 110 miles an hour going through there. But not necessarily if you only have a few more trains going at 79 miles an hour. And I don't think, I called HSR myself just to get an idea, and they said that they're going to be doing some outreach of finding out. I believe what they need is something like an EIR but a little bit different. They need to find out who's going to take that train. I don't think they have an idea, or at least they're not telling us, how much it's going to cost. I think it will be primarily businesses. In the case of San Francisco, the people who will take that train in the morning to go down and do their business and come back in the evening do not necessarily live in San Francisco. In fact, probably more live outside San Francisco than live inside San Francisco. And I believe that is probably knowable. You remember, then we were talking about the business tax, somebody in the last year's council said, I think it might have been Councilmember Niss, "We really can't do anything until we know what we have to work with." And I think that you'll have to know better and good luck.
Thank you. And our final speaker is, I believe it's Rita Vehu.
Rita Vehu. I agree with Bob Moss. The Caltrain Electrification Project is going to impact all of us. In my life, I've realized that most traffic studies underestimate the final results as far as the impact of traffic. I think when 280 was put in and then when 85 was put in, it was going to solve all the problems. We're looking at increased housing density in all cities. I think the ridership will go up and I think that's a wonderful thing. But I think for Caltrans to come through and say that three of the seven intersections that will be most affected are in Palo Alto, but we cannot help you, is not acceptable. And I would really encourage the council to do whatever is necessary to make sure that the grade separation occurs. We have a big problem in this town with suicide. I think having a train go 110 miles an hour or even 79 miles an hour, eight times an hour, is not going to help that situation. The impact of quieter trains is also going to be a problem. So I think that this community needs to get together behind grade separation sooner than later. I think it needs to be a requirement for this city to get on board, no pun intended, with Caltrans. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the members of the public for coming this evening, to Caltrain and city staff for their presentations, and we will now move on to our next agenda item. So thank you very much. So next on our agenda, we have a couple of special orders of the day. First, we have a presentation regarding Community Services Department Summer Programs. And it looks like Ryena Halpern is going to be presenting to us.
That's right. Good evening, Council. I'm Ryena Halpern, Assistant Director for Community Services. And just as we're preparing for this, I'd like to ask all the Community Services Department staff who's still here, who's able to stay, including Greg Betts, to come on down here. So in your packet, you'll see a report called the CSD Community Services Department Summer Camp Report. And a year ago, Director Greg Betts gave you this report. It was received very well and we thought we would do it again. So the difference we have this time is that Greg has retired after 31 years of service and we wanted to dedicate this issue to him. What we see in this report, and we're going to just scroll through it so you can see the pictures, is an incredible amount of heart and dedication on the part of the CSD staff to serving the community. And this was really led by Greg over these many years. So I wanted to give you some data that we find in this. Mom, are you scrolling? Okay. Mom's going to scroll through here. So I'm going to just summarize the data that is in this report. In the summer of 2014, we held 300 summer camps in fine arts, theater, recreation, sports, special interests, and JMZ. We served 4,400 campers. We had over 600 campers waitlisted. We raised over 1.1 million in revenue. We also had 1,500 general admission swimmers, 8,000 attendees at our Chili Cookoff, and about 40% of our 1 million annual visitors to our parks and open space. In addition to our 75 full-time staff and over 300 part-time staff, we had more than 35,000 volunteer hours valued by the IRS at over $900,000. So this happens every summer and throughout the year because of our great staff and because of our great leadership. So today, we wanted to honor Greg Betts as an amazing leader with an incredible heart and thank him for all his years of service.
Good evening, council members. Acting Director Rob DeGosse just want to say a few words of thanks as well. I love the summer program. Thank you, Ry, for that summary. We certainly have an array of programs. There's really something for everyone and I hope this summer I can give some of you a tour of some of our summer camp programs. By the way, each new council member is adjudged at the next Chili Cookoff, so you can look forward to that. Greg is one of the most boisterous judges we have, actually. So here's Greg. I do want to also just amplify the thanks to the staff that make it happen and the volunteers that make summer happen every year. It's really extraordinary. We have such passionate volunteers year-round and some young volunteers or helpers, really what they are. I don't know if you know this, but for every camp that we have, we have a counselor and training program. So we have these 13- and 14-year-old kids that are learning about leadership and support and then they go into the program and become counselors or lifeguards and things like that. So it's an outstanding program and we have some of the staff here and thank them for their great work. We also have Greg Betts here. He's been a great director. The summer program, as well as all our programs, the stronger participation is up. Customer satisfaction has never been so good, so we thank Greg. Thank you.
And I think that would pretty directly lead us into item number three, which is a resolution of the City Council and the City of Palo Alto expressing appreciation to Greg Betts upon his retirement. And I've asked Councilmember Niss, who has known Mr. Betts for so very long, to read the resolution, if you would, please.
It's a real pleasure to be able to read this. Greg, why don't you come on up to the mic so they can all see you and the mics can pick you up and so forth? So as I said, it's a great pleasure to read this. I think you and I have known each other a very long time. I've watched you enjoy what you have done and been such an asset to the community. So, reading as it says, "Whereas Greg Betts has enthusiastically served the citizens of Palo Alto for over three decades as an innovative, compassionate, and customer-focused leader, who's developed successful programs, fostered strategic partnerships, enhanced community assets, and achieved measurable customer satisfaction." I know the current Vice Mayor will really appreciate that if it's measurable customer satisfaction. Greg first joined the City of Palo Alto as a volunteer at Animal Services in 1972 and then worked as a part-time employee during high school and college. December of '83, he was hired as the superintendent of Animal Service and worked there until '96, when he ultimately joined the Community Services Department. Since joining Community Services, he's worked tirelessly to connect stakeholders and create partnerships that have resulted in many stewardship programs, various habitat restoration projects, and grant funding programs that have expanded and enhanced our community's assets to include the Heritage Park Playground, very close by, we could walk to it. Same with Litton Plaza renovations, Cogswell Plaza Wi-Fi, and most recently, and a wonderful addition, the Magical Bridge Universal Access Playground at Mitchell Park. And I'll bet you thought that would never happen, right? Greg has led the city's park expansion efforts by dedicating the park we just mentioned, as well as the Bressler property at the Rastodaro Preserve. I will never forget that one. Enlarging Foothills Park and creating the Beta Ridge Trail to connect urban areas to Open Space Preserve and four nature centers from the Baylands to the skyline. Greg has facilitated extensive public outreach for the long-term planning efforts of specific park and facility design, such as the Rastodaro Preserve Educational Gateway Facility, Mitchell Park Community Center, and has initiated the citywide Parks, Open Space, Trails, and Recreation Master Planning Process for the last 30 years of Palo Alto recreational facilities. Quite an undertaking. And while working for Animal Services, he developed the Pet Adoption Counseling and Screening Protocols and expanded Animal Control Service contracts with neighboring cities and implemented the Microchip Program for Pet Recovery. So with that, therefore, let it be resolved that the City of Palo Alto recognizes Greg Betts for his tireless and enthusiastic commitment to the people of Palo Alto and to thank him for his 31 years of dedicated service on their behalf. And when the time comes, I will move that. Could we applaud Greg?
So Greg, Greg, I'll offer, I'll offer the opportunity to speak now or if you want the opportunity to defend yourself after other people speak, you can speak later. So it's your call.
I just want to take a moment to say thank you for the tremendous opportunities I've had ever since starting as a volunteer at the animal shelter, to work with the public, to be able to continue great programs that I enjoyed as a kid at the Junior Museum and at the Recreation Department. It's not often that you're able to have both a vocation that's also your avocation. I feel extremely grateful to the staff that I've been blessed to work with that is so creative, so dedicated, so fun, and so very, very hardworking, and for the leadership that I've had a great privilege to work with over the years. Thank you for all the experiences and thank you too for the wisdom of this council that reads every single page of our staff reports, asks good questions, challenges us to be the best, and doesn't mind enjoying all the great events that we have to offer. I'm so grateful. Thank you.
And we have four people who would care to speak. Nicholas Tajibana to be followed by Piper Holland. Is, yes, is Nicholas here? Would you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Piper Holland and I am a seventh grader at the Nueva School in Hillsborough. I've been a part of the Palo Alto Children's Theater for three years. It takes me a good 20 to 30 minutes to get to the theater every day for rehearsals. But when I get there, I don't know if it's the cozy feeling or the friendly people, but nothing compares to the time that I've spent there. One thing that we all love to hear is the sound of the audience laughing. It makes us work even harder because we know we are making people happy. We couldn't be doing this without your support. I have five more years left to create more great memories with my theater family and I hope that you will come watch us soon and let us make you laugh. Thank you for everything, Mr. Betts. We couldn't have done it without you.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Tajibana and I am also in seventh grade. And I'd like to personally thank you for all your support throughout the years for the Palo Alto Children's Theater. And I'd like to say just a couple of words about what the theater means to me. I've been with the theater for five years and one of my favorite things about the theater is the community because you have kids from Palo Alto and beyond that all come together to make an unbelievable show. And whether that be a play or a musical, it's always something magical. And one of the main things that helps us get a magical show is the just outstanding staff. And like one of my favorite costumers, Jenny, I remember my first show, she painted 1,000 white dots, well, over 1,000 white little dots on a dress. And then to give it a more cartoony feel, she painted a small black dot in each of those. And then we have amazing people in music such as Patricia Urbano, who helps us not only learn the music, but bring it to life and really tell us what it's about and what it means to the show. And last but not least, we have Mr. Lucky, who has not only helped me become a better actor, but a better person. So thank you, Mr. Betts. For our last show of 2014, we dedicated it to you and here's a signed poster by the cast. And thank you so much for everything you've done.
That's a nice gift. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Allison Williams. And good luck following that act.
Yes, never, never follow children or pets. I'm Allison Williams and I just want to thank Greg for all his support, all his kindness for years and years and years. So I hope you have a truly excellent retirement and come back and see everybody in the community who owes so much to you. Many, many thanks.
Cassie Lee to be followed by Joe Hirsch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name's Cassie Lee and I'm presently the Senior Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. I didn't get a chance to attend Greg's goodbye party and I really wanted to just say a few quick words. From 2001 to 2010, I was an employee in the Community Services Department and had the privilege of working with Greg during those years. I learned a lot from Greg and had the opportunity to really see his service and it was a real honor to serve along his side. As we all know, Greg was raised in Palo Alto and I believe his upbringing led to an innate love for this city and a keen sense of this community's values. During my time in the department, I saw firsthand how Greg acted as a true statement each day. He ensured that the organization responded to our citizens with the highest level of compassion, consideration, and customer service. I have to tell you a quick story about how much Greg cared about this community. For those of us that know Greg, we know he's a well-traveled man. After one of his trips, he came up to me and gave me a piece of paper and it had the name of a management consulting firm on it. He asked me to call them and get an estimate about their customer service training. I asked him what this is about and he told me that he had just received the best customer service he had ever received in his whole life and he wanted our community centers and staff to begin to model that behavior. I told him that I'd get on it right away, but then said, "What were you doing thinking about work on vacation?" I think that just goes to show that the type of person Greg is. As our organization continues to transition, tonight, you know, we say goodbye to a great public servant and a great, and a solid, solid servant and a solid administrator. Greg, I just want to let you know that you're a great role model to me. I do look forward to more visits and lunches, and I will really, truly miss you.
Joe Hirsch.
Joe Hirsch, former president and board member of the Cardiac Therapy Foundation. We started at Cabo Lee in January of two thousand three, and over the years have had a number of contract extensions, another one of which you have on the consent calendar tonight. And I just want to acknowledge the wonderful support we have had over the years from Greg and Rob, which was very kind, very helpful. And I also want to acknowledge that I know that Greg will not miss emails from me asking about another contract extension. Thank you, Greg.
And before we entertain the motion from Councilmember Niss and present you with your resolution, City Manager has something for you.
Join me up here, Greg. Despite the -- it was easy for Greg to say that he was really happy and appreciates the council reading every page of the packet and those questions, because he doesn't have to answer any of them anymore. But I wanted to share with you just a token of the respect and appreciation your colleagues on the executive leadership team have for you. You know, you've seen a small testament of how Greg has contributed to the community and how well-received you are there. He's also been a stellar member of the leadership team. Even though we're organized into these departments and service areas, there's very little that can happen in this city by just one department. And Greg has really been, you may not know it, a pioneer, but in sort of building bridges across the organization, whether it's with public safety, our public work staff, my office, or whatever. And so, and he's made a lot of contributions outside the realm of just being Community Services Director, in the whole spirit of continuous improvement and a focus on the community for all of our organizations. So I did want to just share and read this, Greg, that in recognition of your dedication and leadership as Director of the Community Services Department, providing creative, fun, and meaningful experiences that have improved the quality of life, which will last for generations of Palo Altons, we, the executive leadership team, have been honored to work with you and celebrate your contribution to the citizens and the city of Palo Alto for thirty-one years, nineteen eighty-three to 2014. Congratulations.
So with that, and with those very kind words that you heard from everybody, Greg, and a very fond goodbye, I would move the resolution.
That motion was made by Councilmember Niss, and I believe it was seconded by Councilmember Berman. So with that, we'll vote on the board. And so, with no surprise, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, I have a number of things to report. A couple of them are a little bit long, and I'm just, I don't know that there's anything so time-sensitive. I thought you might just, I could defer this till the end of the meeting. I know that you have items before you, members of the public, so with the councils, okay? I will revisit you maybe this evening or tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Much appreciate that. We don't need an action to move those, so, very good. Thank you very much, City Manager. Next on our agenda is oral communications. We have a number of cards here. We have -- we have seven cards, and with your indulgence and permission, we'd like to move these comments to two minutes rather than three, given the number and given our schedule and the items we have after this on our agenda still. So first speaker is Lynn Krug, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor Holman and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lynn Krug. I've long since worked here for fourteen years in utilities as a water, gas, wastewater, field inspector. The reason I'm coming to speak to you tonight, and many of you know me as a union steward and a former representative, I'm not coming in that capacity. I'm coming to speak to you as a speaker for women in the workplace. I've represented and advocated for women to professional organizations, to schools, and to trades groups, to hire women. And I believe the diversity of community and in the workplace enhances experience and the quality of life. Tonight, I come to you as an advocate for women in the workplace. I've been an advocate and speaker for women, men, and minorities, to help them be introduced to the trades and participate in the trades. I'm hoping that diversity becomes an innovative priority for our workplace in utilities, MSC, public works, parks maintenance, water quality control. At this time, for field employees, there are some five or six field employees who happen to be women. And once again, that's parks maintenance, public works, utility operations, auto shop, out of some two hundred to two hundred and fifty employees. Now, if you look at it one way, I could represent twenty percent of the women employees employed in those fields. And startlingly, we could increase the number of women electricians by a hundred percent if we hired one apprentice. Same thing with drivers. We hired one woman driver, we would increase that by a hundred percent out of utilities for truck drivers. Or equipment maintenance, one woman in equipment maintenance, working on cars, would increase that by a hundred percent. We could also increase in public works for road maintenance, one woman would increase that a hundred percent. If we hired one more woman inspector in utilities engineering, we would increase that by fifty percent. So you can see that this is something we could easily address by the numbers, and I represent a great proportion of very few people. And diversity helps enhance the quality of a workplace. The lack of diversity could possibly indicate issues which we need to address, and providing a workplace that has quality and quality of life issues addressed within it. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you, and I hope that we'll take this on as a 2015 issue. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krug, for coming, and welcome back. Our next speaker is Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Dr. Martel.
Good evening again, Mayor Holman and Councilmembers. Some months ago, LaDoris Cordell, whom you all know, appeared before this body, and it was at a time when people were objecting to a proposed ordinance banning sleeping in cars, more or less. The LaDoris stood up at this microphone, and I thought to myself, here's a winner. She's going to say the same thing as Winter, and Arum, and Bill Stafford. She's going to say that it sounds like an untenable legal proposition, but people will listen to her because she's establishment. And to my surprise, she did not say anything about the law. What she said was, "These people have lost everything, and now you want to take away their cars." And I thought to myself, my God. What she's saying is that we're put on earth to help each other, which is a maxim, a civilizing maxim of all religions. And looking through Sunday's New York Times, I came across a large dialogue about the lack of social services in the United States. And it was very clear from all the people that spoke that they blamed the fact that we are spending too much on growth and making money, in a sense, on capitalism. And I would like you, as you make these decisions, to ask yourself if you aren't giving away to an unconscious urge to pay obedience to the ideology of capitalism, because it's reached a tipping point. You can use a little capitalism. You can get railroads, and you can use it to kickstart the economy, getting together a lot of money, at the expense, usually, of others, but it's gone far enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Martel, to be followed by Sabelle Laveo-Buchan.
Happy New Year. I'm Danielle Martel. I'm a lifelong resident.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Okay, you want to start my time over again? Happy New Year. I'm Danielle Martel. I'm a lifelong resident of North Palo Alto. My family has lived here for five generations. I know that you all know me, and that I've had a recent informal hearing with Palo Alto. As predicted, the hearing was a travesty. I was not allowed to confront my accusers, and I was given no process rights. In fact, the hearing officer, Mr. Lance Baer, admitted that he'd never proceeded over a hearing before, and told me to quit asking for my rights because he was in charge, and I had no rights unless he gave them to me. Obviously, I want to file an appeal. Once again, I come before council to request that you intervene in the interest of justice and to help close the gap between Palo Alto city government and its support of its citizens. Please reprimand our city attorney, Molly Stump, and order her to immediately send me the Palo Alto Municipal Code for an Administrative Appeal. After more than sixty days of repeatedly demanding the steps for filing an appeal with the city, please understand that I now know that city attorney Molly Stump has been acting in a hostile, unethical manner and has been misleading me. Both advice from a law firm and a Santa Clara County Supreme Court assure me that my appeal is an administrative appeal, not an appellate appeal, as city attorney Stump continually falsely claims. She is acting dishonestly to repeatedly direct me to Civil Code Procedures 1094.6, when she knows full well that Superior Court is not my remedy at this time. Let me remind you all that we are a democracy, not a society of secrets, and Molly Stump is a government employee obligated to serve the public. As attorney of standing for the city of Palo Alto, I have been further counseled that Ms. Stump's personally withholding access to my rights has placed me into a catch-22 scenario. I can't oppose our city if I don't know the rules. Only the city knows the rules. The city won't disclose the rules. Again, I can't oppose the city if I don't know the rules. Please, without further delay, order Ms. Stump to send me the Palo Alto Municipal Code for an Administrative Appeal.
Thank you.
Council, you have a good citizen who is upset.
You need to finish up. Danielle. Thank you. Sabelle Laveo-Buchan, to be followed by Deb Goldine.
Sabelle Laveolo-Buchan. And so it's great to be here and to greet the new elected officials for the city council. I'm just thrilled with the election results. I think it showed what this city really wants, and it's pretty clear what we want. We want to have affordable housing. We want to have economic and ethnic diversity, and I'm looking forward to results that reflect what the election was all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Goldine, to be followed by Lois Salo.
I'm here to voice my support for Animal Services. I read the agenda almost every week, and I'm afraid I'm going to miss it when it comes up on the agenda. So I don't, it's a city service that is near and dear to my heart. That's all. Oh, and I love Caltrain and I hate Bart.
Thank you. And our final oral communication speaker is Lois Salo.
Congratulations, new council members, and congratulations, Mayor Holman. My first request is for you to rejoin Mayors for Peace. Over sixty percent of the United States budget goes for war. Mayors for Peace is in a hundred cities, and is actually throughout the world, and is asking for the tax money to be sent back to our people for all of the needs, low-income housing, jobs, infrastructure, and education. My second request is that this city give an ordinance of the living wage. This Santa Clara County has already done this, and this is the, would be the correct thing to do. Third, I would like the city to think about building low-income housing, which it is mandated to do. I would like them to divest from oil and war industries in favor of ecologically correct ones, and give tax credits for solar panels. I would like you to come forward to be for changing Proposition 13, so that business will pay its fair share, and California and the cities will again be the magnets for education that California once was, instead of being at the bottom. Thank you very much. This is a big agenda.
Thank you very much. So that concludes, we actually have a practice of not encouraging either applause or other kinds of response to speakers, so that everyone has a playing field that's even. That concludes oral communications. We now go to the consent calendar. And I entertain a motion to approve. So a motion by Councilmember Schmitt, excuse me, a motion by Councilmember Sharf, seconded by Councilmember Schmidt, to approve the consent calendar. I see no lights. Should we vote on the board? And consent calendar is approved unanimously. So now we go to our first action item, which has brought a lot of people out this evening. And this is an action on the preliminary matters regarding the application to close the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. And we have three things in front of us this evening to consider, and I believe the city attorney has some information for us to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, Vice Mayor Schmidt, council members, city attorney Molly Stump. I'll make just a few comments to introduce this item tonight, and then the council for the parties are prepared to make presentations to you this evening as well, and many members of the public will no doubt wish to speak as well. This is the first of several items on the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park that will come before you. Buena Vista, as you know, is a four-and-a-half-acre mobile home park in South Palo Alto in the Barron Park neighborhood, and it's Palo Alto's only mobile home park. There are approximately a hundred mobile homes at the structure, and four hundred Palo Altons live there. In two thousand twelve, the owner of the park applied to close it, and began a process that is laid out in state law and in a local ordinance to go through procedural requirements in order to be allowed to do that. In two thousand thirteen, the owner began submitting a relocation impact report, and after a series of submissions that the city deemed to not be complete, that process was completed in two thousand fourteen. that the city deemed to not be complete, that process was completed in 2014. Under Palo Alto's ordinance that governs the closure process, the item was scheduled for a full hearing before an independent hearing officer who spent three evenings in May of 2014, hearing from the parties and the residents and the public, and prepared a full written decision evaluating the items before him as spelled out in our ordinance. The hearing officer did issue a final decision in September of last year, and in October, that decision was appealed to the city council, which is the process that's set forward in our ordinance. That is the last step for this closure process within Palo Alto. At that point, the decision is final and any further process would be through our court system. Under Palo Alto's ordinance, the closure application must be approved if the owner proposes or a package of mitigation measures are established that are adequate to mitigate the adverse impacts on mobile home park owners from the closure of the park, provided that those measures do not exceed the reasonable cost of relocation. That is a feature of our local ordinance that is also required by state law and in essence acts as a cap on mitigation measures that can be required for a property owner to go out of business and close a mobile home park. Before you today are three preliminary items. So this, that standard itself will not be addressed by the council this evening. This is really a meeting to get organized. The park owner's attorney has asked the council to dismiss the appeal on the grounds that it is improperly brought by the residents' association. So that is an item that the council can address tonight, assuming the council does not, in fact, dismiss the appeal but allows the appeal to go forward. There are two other items that we propose for you to address tonight. One is to set some simple procedures that will govern the proceeding, and then the third item is to direct staff to go ahead and schedule it. We have proposed to you that the late February timeframe is appropriate. There is an extensive record that was prepared before the hearing officer in this case that council will need to review in detail. I was asked by a council member, and so I'll share with all of you, the timing to get that material to you. Assuming the council does not dismiss the appeal this evening and directs that, that things move forward on roughly the timeframe that we've identified, we will be sending tomorrow to the attorneys on both sides, a list of the documents that the staff believes make up the appropriate and essential documents that the council will need to consider. We will give them a very short timeframe to make any comments if they believe there are additional key documents that should be provided, and then we have to reproduce those documents. So it will be probably next week when we will get a full packet of material to council members to begin to review, and it looks kind of like that. The one potentially longer timeframe piece is the verbatim transcript that was prepared of the hearing officer proceeding. We do need to work through a certified court reporter to obtain those copies and that may have a slightly longer timeframe, but we will get you as much information as we can next week so that you can begin your review process and then with the transcript to follow as soon thereafter as possible. Those are my preliminary comments, and I would propose, Mayor Holman, that you invite the owner's attorney, Ms. Nanda, to address the council this time.
And just a little bit towards our process, yes. And then that would be followed by the Buena Vista residence attorney and then the members of the community who'd like to speak. And we have a certain number of cards right now. If we have any other members of the public who'd like to speak to this, it would help us greatly if you could go ahead and turn a card in so we can manage our time. So if you intend on doing that, that would be wonderful. And do know that we do have interpretation facilities here this evening over here on the right, so, so.
And perhaps it'll be helpful to just remind everyone that we have asked the attorneys to hold their comments to 10, initial comments to 10 minutes, and they'll have two to three minutes to sum up then after the public is heard from.
Thank you very much. And if the attorneys would introduce themselves when they step up to speak, that would be very helpful.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Margaret Nanda. I'm an attorney. I represent the Gisser family, the owner of Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. Since this is my first time appearing before the council, I'll explain. I have been representing the Gisser family throughout this matter since mid-2012, when we began to meet with the city about the possible closure of the park. I have been practicing in the area of mobile home park law now for approximately 35 years and represent owners and operators. I'd like to address the city council tonight on two issues regarding the appeal of the hearing officer's decision, which was final in September of 2014. The first issue concerns the appeal. The residents' association filed the notice of appeal on October 14th. Six days later, on October 20th, I wrote my first of three letters to the city attorney asking, or raising the objection about the filing of the appeal on behalf of the association. I have taken the position in this matter that the plain language of the conversion ordinance, which says that an aggrieved person may appeal the decision, is the correct one in the context of the ordinance. I think that the term aggrieved person, when seen in the context of the ordinance, means when you are talking about a mobile home park conversion ordinance, one by the city which concerns the sole park in the city, it's easy to see who would be aggrieved, an aggrieved person, from a hearing officer's decision. It appears to me it would be either the park owner or it would be a resident. The, the city attorney, in her discussion of the definition of aggrieved person in the city council staff memo that you have, sees the, agrees or states that there is no definition of aggrieved person apparently within the Palo Alto Municipal Code in any section, certainly not in the context of this ordinance. But further, she sees it in the larger, in the larger definition of just defining the term "person," which does include group or association, companies, entities, et cetera. But according to the city attorney, the people at Buena Vista are so similarly situated that apparently living at that address is enough, that an appeal, as she puts it, even by an individual contesting the hearing officer's decision, would be enough in this case to trigger an appeal on behalf of everyone who is quote-unquote "similarly situated." I have great respect for the city attorney. However, I submit that they are legally incorrect in their opinion and that the standing of an association to appeal an administrative decision such as Mr. Labade's, the issue of standing is critical to the appeal process. If the association or an individual lacks standing to appeal, then the appeal cannot go forward. Now, in the residents' association, in the letters on this issue, the association attorneys continue to ignore a pertinent fact, which is that the association has acknowledged from the beginning in this matter, and certainly at the very first hearing, and you will get the transcript and the testimony of Melissa Morris, the same court reporter who is here tonight taking my remarks, was at the hearings. Ms. Morris stated that the association represents approximately 80% of the people who live at Buena Vista, which means that they do not represent 20%. Our position is that an association, when it can represent its members, can only represent its members. It can't represent non-members. So our first point was, because we knew this to be a fact, that not every person at Buena Vista was appealing Mr. Labade's decision. And as Ms. Stump has noted, once the, when the, when, if this council hears the appeal, that's the end of the city's process. The ordinance specifically provides that if you did not appeal to the decision, the decision is final. So as to people who are not members of the association and no one separately filed an appeal, the matter, Mr. Labade's decision is now then final. So we have never asked for a membership list. What we have asked for is for them to tell us who is not a member of your association, and they have refused to do so. Because they say we're secretly asked, or we're asking in essence for their membership list. We say this because members, people who live at Buena Vista, homeowners who live there, have come into the park office and said to the park owner, and I have represented this in my letters to the city, that they either are a member of the association and don't wish to appeal the Labade decision, are willing to accept what he offered or what he agreed upon or ordered, or they are not a member of the association and will accept what Mr. Labade considered mitigation assistance. So we have said, as to those people, the decision is final. Tell us who they are. Secondly, now then, the city attorney gave her opinion in the staff memo, which raised our, the last issue which I think is very critical and which we addressed in our letter of January 6th to the council and to Ms. Stump and Mr. Calling. And that is that under relevant case law, and I submit this is extremely important, that, that it is critical to establish standing and that in order to do so, if you, if an assoc, under relevant case law, if an association is representing its members, there's a three-pronged test, and we discussed those three prongs, but the most important one for this council, given my short amount of time to talk, is that it states very clearly that if the claims of members of the association are different and distinct, the, the association cannot represent those members because they have individual claims. And I submit that there can be no more individuality than the residents at Buena Vista. They share something other than a common address. This is not an apartment building. I assume that all of you have been out to the park. You have seen the variety of housing that is there. You have everything from fifth-wheelers to RVs to travel trailers to true mobile homes, to homes which have been so remodeled and augmented that you can't really tell if there's a trailer inside there or not. So I, my point is, is that you also have individual residents who live in those homes. They are old, they are young, they are people with children. If you read ultimately the tran, which you may or may not, if you've read the transcript of, and you listen to the people even who are probably about to testify after me, you will see that they are very different. And they are different in whether they are disabled, whether they are young, whether they are old, and so forth. And so to say that they are one homogenous group when they are asserting individual claims, particularly because no one here will get the same amount of mitigation assistance as the person next door to them. Each home is appraised differently, some are disabled, some will get certain benefits that others will not. And so my point is that they are, that the third test for standing of an association to represent its members is not met here, and it is legal error for the council not to dismiss the appeal. Secondly, and very briefly, I want to address Ms. Stump's, the second issue in the packet, which is her point about the draft appeal procedures, which are Item 12J of the council packet. I would like to point out to the council that the residents of Buena Vista have been represented by the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, the Western Center on Law and Poverty, a state, which is a statewide legal agency, and a second pro bono law firm, Sibley Austin, which is the sixth-largest law firm in the world with over 1,900 attorneys worldwide. They have been represented since the inception of the proceeding. In every paragraph in every relocation report, relocation impact report, which I submitted to the city, the Law Foundation and the other attorneys opposed every aspect of what we were proposing. I want to submit that these, the packet that Molly described to you, the information you are going to get, which I think she was indicating was maybe 12 inches high, I do not believe that this council needs to hold a complete new adversarial proceeding with witnesses, direct and cross-examination, and so forth. I agree with Ms. Stump's opinion that, given the structure of the ordinance which provided for a full hearing before the hearing officer, it is reasonable to assume that further witness testimony and more evidence was not intended. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll have the attorney from the Mobile Home Park come speak, and you'll also have 10 minutes. And introduce yourself if you would, please.
Good evening. My name is Nadia Aziz. I'm with the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. With me is James Arakal, also with the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. We represent the Buena Vista Residents' Association, and I believe we have a short PowerPoint. First of all, we'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to talk to you today about the hearing procedures. So Buena Vista Mobile Home Park is home to 400 residents. The majority of them are low-income. A lot of them, like you see here today, are Latino families, and a lot of them are homeowners. They own their mobile home. You got it, okay. The city, Buena Vista Mobile Home Park is an important source of affordable housing in Palo Alto, and it's been recognized as one. Going back till at least 1999, Palo Alto's Housing Element has recognized Buena Vista as an important source of affordable housing and recognized that its preservation is important and an important program that the city should, should adopt. So this is, the closure of the park is an important issue, and it's important that the hearing procedures that the council adopts are of the highest level of fairness, transparency, and openness. Mobile homes are an important source of affordable housing, and state law recognizes this. In fact, for low-income families, it's really the only source of homeownership. And mobile homes are actually a misnomer. They're not really mobile. It's very, very expensive to try to move a mobile home. And not just is it expensive, it's almost impossible to find a place to put your mobile home into. In Santa Clara County alone, Buena Vista is one of three parks that are set to close or in the closer, in the closure process. So the housing options for people with mobile homes are more and more limited. That's why state law requires really specific procedures if a park owner wants to close a mobile home park. The park owner has to mitigate any negative impacts, and those negative impacts have to be reviewed by a legislative body. And cities like Palo Alto have enacted even greater protections, recognizing how important mobile homes are as a source of affordable housing. And in Palo Alto, the ordinance specifically gives the city council the final decision about whether the mitigation assistance that's being offered is adequate. So the ask of the residents' association today is three things. One is to let the association continue to appeal this, the closure process. The second is to use a fair, fair hearing process. And by this, we believe that the quasi-judicial hearing procedures that the city's policies and procedures manual describes is the best way for the city council to really make a full and fair decision about, about the closure process. And lastly, we would like the city council to schedule the hearing at a time that's going to allow for the most openness and the most inclusion. We're requesting a hearing date sometime in April to allow both the city council and all parties sufficient time to prepare for the hearing, as well as request that the city council hold it at a time where the residents and the public are able to speak. So who's the residents' association? The residents' association represents the vast majority of residents at Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. It was actually formed right after the closure of the park, specifically to have the residents have a voice in the park closure process. The residents' association has been an active part, has taken an active role through the closure process, whether that's responding to the impact reports or actually representing the residents at the hearing. In fact, no individual resident represented themselves during the administrative hearing. It was the residents' association that represented the residents at the hearing. The residents' association has also made an offer to purchase the park. They've actually made several offers to purchase the park, but the owner has taken the position that he's, he doesn't want to sell the park, or it's not his intention to sell the park to the residents. So our first ask of city council tonight is to let the association continue its appeal. The residents' association has to represent the residents on appeal. They, like the staff- They, like the staff report recommends, or states that the association is considered an aggrieved party, both under the ordinance and under municipal law. It would be a violation of both the ordinance and due process, really, to not allow the residents to continue its appeal. In response to Ms. Nanda's comments about the individualized nature of the relocation assistance, our, the Residents Association throughout the appeal has focused on the methodology. They haven't focused on individual, individualized numbers. And in fact, we really don't have individualized numbers at this point. And asking the res, and looking at it that way, that's, that would be very extremely inefficient, because that would mean over a hundred residents would do, would ask for an individual appeal. And that's why we think that the best way for this appeal to go forward is for the Residents Association to, to continue, to continue the appeal on behalf of the residents. The second thing we're asking is for a fair process, and in this, in this instance, we're disagreeing with the staff report and requesting that the city council use a quasi-judicial hearing process to bring, to allow for the appeal. The city council is really the final decision-maker here. And so we think it's important that the city council not only hear from the park owner, hear from residents, hear from experts and witnesses, but be allowed to have the opportunity to question those witnesses, to question the residents, and to question the public about this process. It's also been our position that the administrative hearing lacks protections that should have been offered as a, under the fair hearing laws. Specifically, we were not allowed the opportunity to cross-examine either the park owner or park owner experts. And so in order to remedy that, we believe that the city council should require the testimony of, of all parties and any experts. There's also a last-minute addendum, like literally the last few minutes of the hearing, the park owner proposed a change to the relocation assistance. And we were never given the opportunity to have a hearing on that specific change to the relocation assistance. And so in order to remedy, remedy what we feel are violations of, of due process, we request that the city council hold a quasi-judicial hearing with evidence and testimony. Lastly, we, we would like the city council to have an open and inclusive hearing. The hearing should be held in a time and place where residents and the public, which in Palo Alto, you know, the Palo Alto is so engaged when it comes to, to matters in front of the city council. And so we, we hope that the city, the public has an opportunity to continue to engage. Like the city attorney has said, there's over nine hundred pages of reports and, and expert witnesses and documents that you all need to review. And so we, we are requesting a hearing sometime in early April in order for both the city council and all parties involved to amply prepare. Lastly, we'd like to thank the city for its continued support. We also thank you for your time and are open to answer any questions or provide further information as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. And so our process going forward is that we will ask all members of the public who care to speak to come forward as they're called. You'll have two minutes apiece to speak. After that, each of the attorneys will have three minutes to make any final comments. And then members of the council can ask questions of anyone who has spoken, whether it be attorneys or members of the public. And that will be our process going forward. So I'm going to do an awful job with your name again. I do apologize. Sibel Laveda Bouchon is our first speaker, to be followed by Bob Moss.
Well, I came out, I submitted my card after those names. I'm not quite clear why I'm first, but that's all right. So I was part of Stop the Ban, where the city decided wisely that it was not right to take away resources from the poor and those that do not have large resources. This, to me, is a very similar situation. I don't see much difference, taking away the homes of people who are part of this community, who are not rich and not part of the one percent by any chance. They are certainly part of the ninety-nine percent. I would just like you to continue the appeal and realize that compassion at this time is what's called for, as well as using your head to realize that this is economic and ethnic diversity in our city, which is pretty lily-white, myself included. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by C. Ready. And just like previously, if your name has been called, if you could come towards the front, it will help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Holman and council members. I urge you to schedule a full hearing on this issue at a time which is convenient to everyone. And I'll start off by saying I totally disagree with the comments and recommendations made by Mr. Gisser's lawyer. I think it was, I'm not going to go into details, but I don't think that they were appropriate or they were accurate. I have real doubts that the compensation which is being offered to the people who are being, would be forced out of the trailer park is adequate. And I think there's good justification for the city council to review what's being offered and what is really required. And just as one example, in order to close the trailer park, there's a requirement that equal housing be found within thirty-five miles. And there has been no identification of equal housing within thirty-five miles. In fact, the few trailer parks which exist within that range have almost no vacancies. There's also a good question as to whether or not the values for the trailers, which are being offered by Mr. Gisser, are adequate. And I think you would have time to give careful consideration to that. Finally, there is one value of living in Palo Alto, which is hard to quantify, but certainly is important, and that is the ability of the children who live in the trailer park to attend Palo Alto schools. If they're relocated, they are not going to find an equivalent school system in any place that they can come close to affording. And I think that should be part of the compensation, but I see no effort made to do so. So I think it's important that the council and the public have an opportunity to discuss this in more detail, to truly evaluate the pros and cons of what's been offered, and make sure that the compensation for the trailer park residents is adequate, which, as far as I can tell right now, is not true.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is C. Ready, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz. And as a reminder, if there is someone who needs help with translation, we do have assistance over to the right. Thank you, C.
Thank you. I think this is all about greed. I think we need to come to terms, and we need to negotiate, arbitrate, and, you know, this thing happens. We have a four-acre parcel, the, the owner want to do bigger things, but there are a hundred families that are impacted. So let's come to terms. Let's not use the technical terms to, you know, BS way around to stop people. So sooner or later, we get, these hundred families have to move somewhere. So let's give them right compensation, maybe fifty thousand dollars to move, plus twenty-five percent of that housing, whatever that gets built, will be offered first to these families. You know, this has nothing to do with Hispanic families and all that. That has, you know, there could be white families, black families, brown families. So it's insulting to say this is a ninety-eight percent Hispanic. Well, that is, that may be a fact, but this is the truth. And it's good karma to get these people right homes and not force them out, and give them a fifty thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars, plus whatever the value of the house is. And this whole thing about, you know, this is, it shouldn't be coming here, we should arbitrate. If we need to, we need to hire Ted Olson to go to the Supreme Court and get this resolved. That's how I see it. This is childish of the plaintiff and defendant, and all these technical terms are meaningless to the people that are impacted. So they need to have six months to move to a bigger school, better school, and all these citizens of Palo Alto need to help them to, not need, could help them to find a home in the meantime. So let's get to work. Let's not waste our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, and Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Lois Salo.
Good evening, council members. My take on these people is a little bit different because the situation is so appalling. Putting four hundred people out on the street where there is no affordable housing is just appalling, and that's what most people want to call to your attention. They're just appalled. But my take is a little bit different. I want to remind you that affordable housing is considered by everyone in this room as a public benefit. You went through Maybell, it was not fun, but you should have taken away from that the knowledge that affordable housing is something that everybody approves of, not necessarily in the exact way in which you want to impose it. Remember that these people are bringing to the table, these, these helpless people, like about thirteen million dollars' worth of affordable housing. I give you that figure because I know of an apartment building, there's only one in town that has a hundred units, and that's what the insurer said it would cost to replace just the building, not the land, of course. So they're bringing you something. But in addition to that, there's something very, very important that you need to know. These people were invited to join Palo Alto in the sixties, when Palo Alto needed a road, a Rastodaro, to be widened to go to the industrial park, because they hadn't planned on it before they did the industrial park. They needed somebody to outweigh the votes of the people who lived on a Rastodaro road, who by gum did not want their front yards truncated and their orchards destroyed, so as to widen a Rastodaro road for an industrial park. Palo Alto needed some other people to outweigh them in voting to annex to Palo Alto, and they got them, and they got them. And now they're saying that they have to leave. They shouldn't have been zoned R-15 in the first place. They should be rezoned back to trailer park. Thank you very much.
Lois Salo, to be followed by Guadalupe Fonseca.
I'm Lois Salo. I'm a member of the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, a hundred-year-old peace group. I would like us to see the city buy the land and allow the people in Buena Vista to remain. I would like the city also, I understand it's an adjacent parcel that is also available. I would like the city also to buy that land and build low-income housing and shelters on that land. Thank you.
Thank you. Guadalupe Fonseca, to be followed by Blanca Fonseca. And again, if you could come forward when your name is called.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm one of the residents of the Mobile Home, and we've been there for a long time. And I just want to let you know that I don't understand how they, they came up with the appraisal, that they want to give us a reasonable amount of money. They say that the maximum, they were talking about forty-five thousand dollars. When we were checking around, not even in San Jose, you can find a mobile home for forty-five thousand dollars. So we really appeal to your good heart. Please help us with this. We need a relocation. If eventually you already going to close this place, which is, and it's been our homes for so many years, we need your help. I do have a flyer right here for a mobile home that is for sale in Mountain View. And it's one of those mobile homes that I can tell you that we have better ones in Buena Vista, and this is for one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Please help us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Blanca Fonseca, to be followed by Diane Jenett.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Blanca Fonseca. I have lived in Buena Vista Mobile Home Park for twenty-three years. And like the ladies say, I've been going to all the mobile homes around the area, and the cheapest mobile home I find is more than ninety thousand dollars. Every time I go ask for help to the manager, there's no manager in there. They only ask me if I am in the association. And to be paying more rent right now without even thinking we're losing our homes, and there's completely the place, when I went there twenty-three years, it was beautiful. By as soon as everything is getting closed, it's been more than three years that we're paying for our good laundry, for our good garbage, for our good stuff, nothing is resolved in there, and the only thing it could be say to us, they said to me last couple months, if you want to leave, I buy your mobile home right now for twenty-three thousand dollars. So I think we are human beings. It's not about Hispanic people. We're all humans. We need a home to survive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diane Jenett, to be followed by Melody Chaney.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak. I've never spoken, I've never even been to a city council meeting, but this particular issue is something that I feel is so important that I wanted to come. I think that Palo Alto is really at a crossroads here. This issue of gentrification and displacement of the most marginally viable people in the whole Bay Area is, you know, such an important and hot issue. It's really a tragedy. And I've lived here for thirty-five years. I was lucky enough to have my daughter in Escondido School, where she got to go to school with lots and lots of kids from different backgrounds, from all around the world. It really made her who she is. And I listened to the kids that talk at the hearings about their experience of going to school with the kids at the Buena Vista Park, and it, it just reminded me of why this is so important that we keep the residents here in Palo Alto. So I just believe that the way that we do that is to give this a lot of attention, a lot of time, and a lot of resources, so that we can really, really have a full hearing on all the issues that go into this and come up with a solution that Palo Alto has done over the last thirty-five years on all kinds of things that seem a lot harder than this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melody Chaney, to be followed by Mary Keen.
Good evening. My name is Melody Chaney. I am the secretary for the association. I've lived in Buena Vista about thirteen years. I only have two quick comments. One, in order for you to make an overall informed decision and for due process, you need to hear from the people affected, which is residents, the association, members of the community, and our supporters and so on. We need to have a two-way communication. Second, there are other, there are other solutions of just closing the park. As you know, we have made offers to the, to the owner. We are also looking into other things. Buena Vista is my first home. I want to keep it. Thank you.
Mary Keen, to be followed by Nancy Crop.
Hello, everybody. And you know, I'm Mary Keer. I have lived at Buena Vista Mobile Home Park for ten years. I know all my neighbors. It is a affordable, safe and secure place. It's like a community to us. Buena Vista is made up of four hundred residents, consisting of families with children, disabled, elderly, and mentally challenged, the latter of which can't not speak for themselves. This is why we need an appeal, so that there is no park closure, that there is no one that loses their affordable, safe and secure place to live, also so that we can discuss solutions to keep Buena Vista open. Please help us save our homes. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Nancy Crop, to be followed by Amado Padilla.
Hi. Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nancy Crop. I am a resident of Barron Park. I actually grew up in Palo Alto and graduated from Gunn, and I'm really happy to be raising my family here now in Palo Alto. A primary reason why we, I brought my family to Palo Alto is for the rich diversity. It offers my son in the schools, and it offers our family this wonderful community that does include this rich diversity, that includes my neighbors at the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. I just want to point out, a week from today, we're going to be celebrating Martin Luther King Day here in Palo Alto. And Dr. King had a dream. You know, he had a dream that we would be judged not by the color of our skin, but by the content. not by the color of our skin, but by the content of our character. And by working together to find a way to preserve this mobile home park in our community, I think we promote that dream, and we don't just give it lip service. We promote a community where people grow up of diverse backgrounds, and that's how you create tolerance and understanding and friendships. And that, Dr. King's dream becomes a reality. And so I do hope that you allow this appeal to go forward. And I also hope you allow it in a way that's a full and fair hearing, that all of us who live in Palo Alto, we are all impacted. We are actually all aggrieved persons. Maybe not technically, maybe not legally, but we're actually all aggrieved by the administrative hearing officer's decision. So thank you for allowing the appeal to go forward and for allowing it to be a full, fair, transparent process and at a time when everybody can participate. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And we have no expressions of appreciation or support, please. Amado Padilla to be followed by Maria Martinez.
Good evening, council members, and I'm delighted to be here this evening. I will be brief. My name is Amado Padilla. I'm a research psychologist and a professor of education at the Stanford Graduate School of Education. I've lived in Palo Alto for 25 years. I've participated in a number of community organizations and activities, including serving on the Palo Alto Unified School Board during the late 1990s. I will be brief, and I only have three points I want to make. I will begin by saying, I love living in Palo Alto. I've lived here for 25 years, and it's just a delightful community to live in. But one of the things that makes it a very good community, as we all know, is that there are a very large number of very smart and very fair-minded people, people who are creative and who know how to solve problems. If Buena Vista is to be closed, I would like that process, as we've been hearing, for the process to be just to the people involved and respectful of the people involved. And I think that's something that's very important if we're going to have an appeal process. And I hope we have an appeal process. Secondly, as we've heard and will continue to hear, if the park is closed, these people will lose everything. They will lose their homes. Many of them will lose their jobs because they live and work in this community. Many of them will lose the quality of schools that their children have been enjoying. Many of them will lose the medical attention that they've been receiving because of their medical disabilities or other illnesses that they have. And the list goes on in terms of the things that they will lose. I can't envision that kind of loss in my own life if I were facing it. Thirdly, I hope that all of you can rise to the occasion and find a solution to the housing crisis that Buena Vista presents us. It is something that, a solution that's fair to residents and that's fair to the owner. A solution that doesn't have to resolve itself in a win-lose strategy, but a solution where everyone enjoys the benefits of winning. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Martinez to be followed by Roberta Alquist.
Hi, my name is Maria Martinez, and I have lived in Buena Vista for about six years. I come here to demand my rights and the rights of my family. I represent, I live in one of the studios out of 12 studios in the park, and right now I have here that we have no rights in that. And also, I want the rights of my family, because in my family, I live in one studio, and my sister lives with my mom and four more children in the house. She's a single mom, and the place cannot be moved. There is also my brother, and my brother lives in another trailer, and he lives with the wife and two children, and the trailer cannot be moved. And the money that may be getting for the trailer is not even the value of the home, and they cannot move to another place. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Roberta Alquist to be followed by Sue Eldridge.
I've been a resident here since the 60s, and since that time, there's been a housing crisis. Low-income housing goes down, and upper-income housing, or wealthy housing, or commercial development goes up. The city then and now continues to be in the process of becoming more white, wealthy, and walled in. This is not healthy for our community. In my own neighborhood, PC zoning through city planning and council action allowed nearly an entire block to be destroyed of housing. And in its place, commercial development went up. I see this continuing all around me. Not only that, I see, for instance, on Forest Avenue, a real estate investor who owns a great number of low-income, no longer low-income, moderate-income apartments, has been able to increase his rentals from $800 for a single unfurnished apartment to three times that in the last three years. This is not healthy for our kids, for residents. We need to stop the commercial development until we find enough low-income housing to serve the needs of our community. We need to save Buena Vista. It's critical for a balanced, equitable community to have racial and class diversity. The housing corp, corporation, corporate sponsors, there are a lot of moneyed people here who own companies, who might be called in to subsidize the low-income housing and the purchase of Buena Vista. It's time that we really take significant concrete action and find equity as a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Eldridge to be followed by Jeff Greenfield.
Good evening, council members. I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Barron Park Elementary School and co-chair of the PTA Council's Buena Vista Advocacy Committee. Buena Vista families and students are a special and important part of our Palo Alto community and our schools. When the Gissons announced their intention to close the Mobile Home Park in 2012, the school community rallied round very quickly in support of the students and families in Buena Vista. The PTA Council representing all 13 PAUSD schools unanimously passed a resolution urging that we find affordable housing that allow Buena Vista students to continue their education in Palo Alto. The school board followed up with another unanimous statement of support, affirming the district's commitment to Buena Vista students and their education and their future. They affirmed the value to our community, to our students, and to the district as a whole in the diversity that the Buena Vista students bring. They also urged the council to seek options that allow Buena Vista students to continue in a manner where they can enjoy the educational outcomes they now have. So we urge you to hold the appeal meeting. It's the only opportunity for our city's elected officials to hear firsthand from Buena Vista residents, the owner, and the public. It would be a great injustice, I think, not to allow this to happen. In addition, the appeal must allow for all relevant evidence to be presented and to be available to the council and to the public. Finally, we urge you to take public comment and not ignore it as relevant evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Greenfield to be followed by Ken Dauber.
Thank you. It's not uncommon to hear discussion that residents from some parts of Palo Alto aren't familiar with and don't get other parts of Palo Alto. As a sort of extension, while community support is certainly very strong tonight, I think it's fair to say that most residents throughout Palo Alto aren't very familiar with Buena Vista and don't get Buena Vista. I know for me personally, my first visit to Buena Vista was the La Posada celebration last month. This was a wonderful community gathering, and my family and I gained new respect for the Buena Vista community. And I know many of you council members were there as well, and you understand how special the evening was and how Buena Vista is such an important component of our community. I appreciate this is a complex issue, and that the rights of the property owner must be respected. However, as a member of our community, I'm asking that the council allow the appeal to proceed, and I add my voice to support a bilingual, open, and transparent hearing scheduled at an evening time, when most Buena Vista residents will be able to attend. Bilingual with the, it's great that the translators are here tonight, and it'd be great for the council's responses to be translated appropriately. At the swearing-in ceremony a week ago, the council was challenged to transform Palo Alto to help it become the most compassionate city. While the request was perhaps a bit awkward and unusual, I believe this is clearly an opportunity for a move towards a more compassionate Palo Alto, and I hope you'll agree with granting the appeal. Thank you for your consideration.
And thank you. Ken Dauber to be followed by Winter Dellenbach.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. My name is Ken Dauber. I'm a member of the Palo Alto School Board, but I'm here as a neighbor of the residents of Buena Vista in Barron Park and supporting their claims for compensation. And I particularly want to speak to you about the handling of the value of the schools in determining the compensation due to these residents. The hearing officer acknowledged that Palo Alto schools are among the best in the state, but excluded the value of the schools from compensation. And I think that the council should revisit that decision and should instruct the attorneys to provide the council the material that it needs in order to assess fairly the value of the schools to these residents. It's, I think, incumbent on the council to interpret the ordinance in a broad way. It's a remedial ordinance. And to reach an interpretation that really reflects the real value of the schools. I think it's nonsensical, frankly, in Palo Alto to say that a similar community can be found that doesn't reflect the value of the schools. All of our property values, all of our rents, reflect the extremely high value of the schools in Palo Alto. The property owners' rents over these years have reflected that value. The current value of the property and the future value of the property reflect the value of the schools. So I urge you in considering the level of compensation, to look explicitly at a component of the economic value that these residents are due in their compensation that should be attributable to the schools. I think if you look at, if we just take a common sense look at the real estate values in Palo Alto, it's hard to conclude that a substantial component of that value doesn't come from our fine schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Winter Dellenbach to be followed by Ruth Lowey.
Winter Dellenbach, friends of Buena Vista. Would everybody from Buena Vista that's here tonight stand up? Just Buena Vista, would you stand up? And there are people in the back with the reserve signs, who knew to sit up front. And then would supporters of people of Buena Vista, would you please stand up, and their attorneys? So it's kind of a full house for Buena Vista, which isn't surprising. A few things. The Palo Alto Mobile Home Park ordinance, oh, sit down, reads, "The appeal shall be in the form specified by the city." The appeal shall be in the form specified by the city. That's you. You're the city. You are our only elected officials. You are the closest thing that these folks here are ever going to have to a jury of their peers. And there's only one hearing actually required, and that's this appeal hearing, which I just know you won't take that away from them. The due process afforded nearly 400 people losing everything is a microcosm of the due process that someone either has to put up with or gets, depending on your point of view, if they want a granny unit, if they want an office building, or whatever. So to my mind, these people are owed everything you got in terms of expanding this hearing and hearing all of the evidence, certainly hearing their voices. I saw a note talking about 900 pages being somewhat reflective on that there's enough hearing, there's enough evidence, in a sense, there's enough due process. I disagree with that. We don't take those measurements per page. We take it by a sense of fairness and justice, and that's what is owed here. Also, in the staff's draft appeal procedures, these appeal procedures are intended to provide general guidelines for the conduct of the appeal and may be modified as determined appropriate by the council. You are the deciders. Good luck with that. You are the deciders. You're going to decide who and what to include, who and what you will consider for your decision, and how long the appeal may last. All of these components are necessary, and I hope you include them. One last quick thing. I hope that you remember there's competing property interests. These are homeowners, almost all of them, competing with a property owner. It's not just the rights of the property owner, it's the rights of all of these people.
Thank you. And Ruth Lowey to be followed by Samina Faim.
Good evening, council. My name is Ruth Lowey. I live in Barron Park area, and my family has lived in Palo Alto for 40 years now. So one thing this evening really hit a note, I think it was by the other attorney for the Gissons, said, "Going out of business." Well, this is not a carpet store. This is not a pharmacy. This is a community of people. It's their lives. It's their homes. And I think you need to consider that when deciding how and what you're going to do going forward. So first, I strongly urge that you allow the appeal to go through. Next, as some people have said, we are a very smart and creative community. I would hope that between the council, perhaps the Palo Alto Housing Corporation, and the community of Buena Vista, that you can come up with some reasonable and creative ideas of how to save these people's homes and community. No one is saying that the owner shouldn't get some money from this. But you need to weigh and balance dollars and people's lives, and there has to be a reasonable in-between. So I hope that you will take that very seriously. Thank you.
And thank you. Samina Faim to be followed by Jeff Wrench.
Good evening, everybody. About 33 years ago, I joined my ex-husband at Stanford while he was enrolled in PhD program. Almost 30 years ago, I left him with two young children because he was an abusive father and a husband. I was about 12,000 miles away from my family. Nobody here to help me. I didn't know anything about the city council or anything, otherwise I would have come and bugged you at that time. Anyways, fast forward. I tried to rent a home because I was doing childcare to survive and help my children, raise them in Palo Alto. I went to see a house on College Avenue that was about $1,200. My income was $1,500. And the landlord asked me, "Why do you think I should give you the house while I have six other applicants who earn four times more than you do?" I told him, I said, "Because I'm the one who needs the most. And I will make you a promise. I will leave your house better than I found it, and I will make Palo Alto City a better place and this county a better place." I'm sure all of you know I have fulfilled that promise. So, fast forward again. I'm a community and peace builder. I have come here many times to ask you, make Palo Alto a compassionate city. I've sent you an email tonight about that, too. So I think if this man, my ex-lawland landlord, didn't felt, didn't feel what I needed, and if he had just used his head to just say, "Okay, calculation, you must have three times, you know, the income before you could get that house," I don't know where I would be. I don't know where my kids would be. I was so determined to stay in Palo Alto. I didn't know the value of Palo Alto at that time, but I knew one thing. My kids have good school. I didn't want them to change their schools, their friends, their library, their stores, their friends. I'm urging you to please feel with the hearts. I'm urging you to please feel with the hearts. Palo Alto is rich enough, if all of us pitched in, we can raise enough money to give money to that landlord. And I am volunteering myself to do the fundraising. You know I can plan the events. Some of you have been to my events. So let's put our hands together and do that. And I have a personal story. One of the single mother I have here in the audience, I raised, helped raise her kids. Two of the kids came to my home preschool. So I am personally vested in that. My daughter chose to be at the after-school program at Barron Park because that's where she could make the biggest difference. Misba comes home and brings me stories of all these kids. I feel like I know all of them. So please, let's not think, let's feel, and let's go and save all these people's homes. Together, we can do it.
Thank you. Jeff Wrench to be followed by George Irwin.
Good evening, Mayor Holman and honorable council members. My name is Jeff Wrench. I'm from the Barron Park neighborhood, pretty near the park. And I just want to speak tonight just narrowly about the appeal and why the appeal is so desperately needed. The attorney, Attorney Nanda, offered us a quibble on the meaning of the word "person." I think we need to get past that as soon as we possibly can to the deeper meaning of the appeal and why it has to happen. We, as a community, have been buried in legalese on Buena Vista since 2012. It's all been treated as a simply legal issue. But what we really have not had up till now has been the chance as a community to speak about the implications, which some of us dreamed tonight. The implications for us all of the, of the park is closed. Our community as a whole will be damaged in a serious way, I think I want to say damaged beyond repair, if we lose these beloved neighbors. We need a chance to discuss this as a community, discuss this in, at length, and the appeal is our, a chance to do this. So we, we must have the appeal. Thank you.
And our next speaker will be George Irwin to be followed by Don Anderson.
I'm George Irwin, a resident of the Barron Park neighborhood for 20 years. Our family lives a couple of blocks from the Buena Vista Park, and our kids have gone through school with friends from Buena Vista Park. I'm proud of the diversity that the park has brought to our community. It has enriched our lives in ways that fellow residents can do better than folks who are bussed into the community in the morning and away again at night. The park is an asset to Palo Alto. The city needs to find a way to keep it open. Thanks.
Don Anderson to be followed by Rains Pittam.
Hi, my name is Don Anderson. I live in Barron Park and I have for 30 years. I know that tonight is supposed to be about making technical decisions about what will then be a potential hearing about more technical issues, and I think the fact that we're even having these meetings now is a failure of all of us. I think it's more than pastime after two years for all of us to step back and look at how ridiculous this is, that we're talking about in a, in a situation where a few weeks ago, it was big news that there was a flood, a small flood, in a trailer park in Redwood City. And we're looking at people who are facing a tsunami, and we're going to be talking in a month or two or three about how our hands were tied and we had to look at, we had to parse the technicalities, and they're off and out to sea. That's, that's insanity. And we need leadership, and you are our elected leaders, and we need to do something about this. I think a hearing is important if that's all we can get, but we can do a lot more than that, and I think it's all of our responsibility, and it starts with you who are sitting here. Thank you.
Rains Pittam to be followed by Aram James. Thank you.
That's a new, new pronunciation.
My apologies.
I completely agree with the previous speaker. This is pretty ridiculous. I have been living here for 46 years. I was twice on the vertical from Stanford, and when I came back, the town had changed. But then my, we took a medical leave of absence from Palo Alto for health reasons for seven years. I came back two years. And I was horrified. The town is completely lawyered up to start with the school board. They are under investigation for bullying. They keep it, the investigation secret from the populace, and finally, when it comes out, they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on lawyers, and as far as I can tell, they haven't done any investigation or research or find out how do other people deal with bullying. With Buena Vista, during the election campaign, two candidates said, "Let's buy it." And then the lawyer of the city said, "Oh, don't do that. That's dangerous. It'll come back to you." So let's talk about what, what is involved in buying it. As a physicist, I have all my life had to make decisions or conclusions on incomplete knowledge. But I know, I have heard, the inhabitants of Buena Vista have gotten together $11 million. I have heard the owners want $30 million. Let's make this difference 20. There are 108 places. If you divide that number, the 20 million to 108, you get something like for a 30-year mortgage at 3%, you get about $700 a month. That's precisely the amount the people pay right now to the owners for the ground lease. So I think that the legal, the legal aspect has been covered for a long time by Stanford and by the framework of homeowners association. The city could do it, or the Palo Alto Housing Corporation can do this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and sorry about the pronunciation. Aram James to be followed by Edie Keating.
Good evening. So, pretty much grew up in Barron Park. Both of my grown sons went to Gunn High School, lived on Las Robles for many, many years. I'm a homeowner, homeowner at 832 Las Robles. For years, I have watched the citizens that live at Buena Vista walk down my street to go to school. Wonderful, wonderful, extraordinary neighbors. Add to the diversity. It's critical that we make every effort to keep Buena Vista here. As far as the hearing goes, as a trialer, I can tell you, reading a 900-page flat transcript is not going to be a lot of fun for you. To bring to the community a vibrant trial, where we all get to hear and see the witnesses for both sides, where we get to see due process played out, cross-examination, direct examination of the witnesses, is really critical. There's a case that I, I wrote a piece recently on the Ferguson incident that we're all familiar with, and there was a case that I discussed in an article I wrote called Richmond Newspapers versus Virginia. It's a 1980 U.S. Supreme Court case, and it talks about the importance of open proceedings. It was actually in the context of a criminal trial, but it applies on all fours essentially to the importance of having an open proceeding here. I'm going to read you just a little of the language from that opinion. When a shocking crime occurs, and here we're not dealing with a shocking crime, a community out, reaction of outrage and public protest often follows. Here's the critical language. "And therefore, the open processes of justice serve an important prophylactic purpose, providing an outlet for community concern, hostility, and emotion. To work effectively, it is important that society's criminal process, in this case, civil process, satisfy, quote unquote, 'the appearance of justice,' which can best be provided by allowing people to see and observe such process." So that's what the community wants, and I think that it's great in 215 that we're going to move forward as a city and as a city council, showing openness, transparency. And I think there will be a whole lot more confidence in whatever the ultimate decision is, if we don't simply have it on the transcripts, if we hear from the real witnesses that are going to be impacted, the Gissers, all the wonderful residents of Buena Vista, but also the entire community, who will be devastated if we rip the heart of the diversity out of our community by taking these wonderful citizens and taking them out of our city. Think long and hard about the process that you want. I think it should be open. I think you will be glad that you do it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Edie Keating to be followed by Lenora Seimes.
So, in the midst of all of this, and there's, you know, pain and heartache in the midst of all of this, there's one thing I'm very grateful for, that Palo Alto does have a mobile home park closure ordinance, and you have never used it before. It's a very unique situation, and it may well not be used again ever, because the other unique situation is that how many mobile home parks does Palo Alto have? We have one mobile home park. So, this is not a road that you have traveled down before. This ordinance has never been tested. You're giving it a test run. And while there is a legal aspect to this, I understand that you also have an opportunity to use your discretion. So as you're heading, heading down a road that hasn't been traveled before, I don't think that's the time to go fast. I think that's the time to allow open process, and as, for all of the decisions that are before you tonight, I hope that you will remember the uniqueness of this situation and the newness of this situation, and encourage a expansive process that allows input. This deserves some Palo Alto process. Thank you.
Lenora Seimes to be followed by Mark Weiss.
My name is Lenora Seimes, and I'm so delighted to see all of you up there. I've lived in Palo Alto for 46 years, started out in Barron Park. My kids went to school probably before any of these people lived in Buena Vista, but there was the apartment building, and it was integrated, and it was my kids' opportunity and chance to see people who weren't like me or like them. I live right now on Wildwood Lane, which is right over in the Duvernick, and I still really care what happens to these people, because I bought my house over 30 years ago. There is no way I could buy my house now. There's no way I could live in my house. There's no way I could live in Palo Alto, and I really wouldn't want my house taken away from me, my lifestyle in Palo Alto, what it means to live here. And I don't think anybody sitting there would like that either. I mean, it's just too, it's unfathomable. This is our life. This is our community, and I really hope that this appeal goes through, because these people deserve their homes as much as we deserve ours. Thank you very much.
And our final speaker tonight will be Mark Weiss.
There is enough for all of our needs, but none of our greed. All our need, none of our greed.
So, that was our final public speaker, and we now return to both attorneys, who will have three minutes to speak. And first, we'll be going Ms. Nanda.
I think, obviously, I'm in a difficult situation here tonight as clearly the most unpopular person in the room, other than perhaps Mr. Gisser. I would like to say that the, that the city of, that there is state law, and there is a city ordinance, which you adopted, meaning the, I realize, not the present city council, but a city council of, of Palo Alto with respect to the closure of the single and only mobile home park in Palo Alto. It has certain provisions. One of those provisions, for example, required us to take over 13 months to prepare an approved relocation impact report. It also has a provision regarding a hearing officer. The hearings were public. The here, everyone, anyone and everyone could attend those hearings, and they were held at a time and place convenient to the residents, and were held by a hearing officer selected by the city attorney, paid for by the park owner, in which we had no input as to his selection whatsoever. And I think that it is clear that the majority of people in this room have never read Mr. Labady's decision. And Mr. Labady, on the first page of that decision, speaks to the testimony, the wrenching testimony that he heard over three nights of the public hearing. The very compelling testimony from some of the same people who are here tonight, and some who were not, who were not, and others who obviously are not here tonight, in which Mr. Labady heard the compelling circumstances around the displacement of these people. This is not lost on the park owner or any of us. But as Mr. Labady says, it is his job to enforce the law. And I realize that's a very unpopular statement to make here, because it appears that we are supposed to set aside the law, and I would submit that it is not, it is, it is a reversible error, and it is not up to the council to, I should say it this way, it is up to the council to enforce its own ordinance. And the, and when its own city attorney recommends that we handle the appeal process in a certain way, I would submit there is a reason for that, and there is public and resident testimony which will be available to the council that occurred at that hearing. And I assume at any appeal hearing, even if it's more appellate in style, you will have similar comments from the residents, as you did tonight, and members of the public. They have given their input into this matter, and it was carefully considered by Mr. Labady. It's a very carefully considered opinion of 30 pages in duration in which every single argument raised by either the park owner or the residents' association was addressed by him. Thank you.
And Ms. Aziz, or, if you'd say your name.
I'm not Ms. Aziz, but I'll do my best. James Zaratka, I'm also with the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Just a few points in closing. So one is that I think Ms. Nanda made an excellent point about the compelling testimony that Mr. Labady heard. It's, it gets to the core issues in this matter, and as was also stated, that's simply not going to come through in 900 pages of text that you are going to be reading between now and February, which is a very short time, and we've made the point already, we think more time is required. Whatever way we go on this, that's too soon. You need to hear from the people who are affected and have that be in the record. I think it's, it's clear that what the city attorney is proposing is that the record is closed, and that any, any comments that are made from now on will be simple argument by the attorneys or comments by the public, which cannot be considered in deciding this appeal. This is too important for you to take that approach. Now, I'd just also like to, to point out that when we talk about the quasi-judicial hearing provisions in the, in your policies and procedures, the quasi-judicial hearing are quote, is a quote, "Hearing that requires a higher level of procedural due process because of the potential impact on life, liberty, or property." This is simply the paradigmatic case that requires this type of due process. And it, it goes on to say that such hearings involve a single parcel of land and apply facts and evidence in the context of existing law. That's what we have here. One parcel of land, it's an extremely important issue, it has a huge impact on the life and property of the folks involved here. It's simply the way to go. And I'll also just say that, you know, we are not asking this council to ignore the law. That was just stated, that we, you know, we have very clear legal basis for, we're arguing when it comes to standing, it's honestly not a close case. I, it's, it's pretty incomprehensible that we're, that the, that basically we're trying to be sandbagged at the last minute here by an attempt to undermine standing of the association, which is clearly legally supportable. So I really appreciate your time tonight. Support, you should, you should endorse the association's standing, give us a fair hearing under the quasi-judicial proceedings, and hold this at a time when people can meaningfully participate. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Thank you to all of the members of the public for coming and for speaking, and appreciate the comments of the city attorneys. I'm going to take a little pause here because it's basically 10 o'clock. We have an item 13 that we have to hear tonight, and we have items 14 and 15 for which we have staff. have staff here.
And Mayor Holman, we have item 16, a closed session, for which I have special counsel attending.
Yes, yes. So, my question to colleagues and to staff, is there any, there's no timeliness to 14 and 15, as I'm aware?
Well, we talked about this briefly this morning. The time sensitivity is that these are dealing with council endorsement of our legislative policy, particularly as it relates to the state legislative policy, and certainly many of you, certainly Councilmember Welbach, can appreciate the fact that we're in January, and this is an important time of year as it relates to bill introduction and those sorts of things. I think we'd be better off with the council having a simple, quick discussion and taking action on this, and if you somehow wanted to revisit it and amend it, would be better than not taking any action on it right now.
And item 14?
Same thing.
Same thing.
I'll move we put item 14 and 15 off, and if I get a second, I'll speak to why. The reason I believe we should is, is that the legislative session, as our city manager for bill introduction is the third week in January. When I looked through this stuff, I didn't see us being able to really put together bills between now and then, whether or not we approve this tonight or not, that we would then want legislators to carry forward. And I think if we have a 15-minute discussion or 20-minute discussion on it, we're not going to be any further ahead, frankly. But if we're going to plan on doing those kinds of things, we should really be looking at this in June or July of the previous year, to come together as a council of what bills we want and move it through. Whereas, looking at it three weeks before, we're not going to actually have an impact in terms of what bills. So we can look at this and then decide when the bills are introduced, what bills we're going to support and be reactive, because I don't believe we can actually get ahead of it anyway, unless we really want to schedule a special session for a council meeting to talk about this at some other time.
Councilmember Menace, do you want to speak to your second?
I will be speaking to the choir with the old council here. But we've talked about this a number of times. Once we get beyond 11 o'clock, which we certainly get beyond 11:30, our decisions are not the same as they would be before that. I'm convinced of it. We still have a whole group of people here tonight, waiting to hear what we're going to do. And that's going to take us some time. By the time we actually get into closed session, I think it's probably going to be after 11, otherwise. And keeping staff here, as well as keeping all of you here, and keeping us here, really gets to be, as I mentioned, less productive after 11 or 11:15. So, Greg, I certainly agree with your comments regarding the item, but on top of that, I think there's also a serious timing issue.
Councilmember Welbach had a comment?
Can I ask a quick question of staff? The idea here is that you want our guidance so that you can continue to move forward, and our lobbyists can continue to move forward with what they're doing for us in Sacramento. Is that correct?
Yes, we have, and of course, we've had some discussion of policy and services. We're actually bringing a policy and services recommendation that had been, for the most part, whether it was 14 or 15, I can't recall, been vetted by the committee. And I appreciate the fact that, I understand the timing issue. Maybe it's for now or for the future. We often have long discussions about frameworks for policy matters that may not be acted on for months, and this is another one. So, I appreciate the timing issue, but I think going forward, if your decision is not to take this up tonight, and I can appreciate that, that maybe at the retreat, we can talk about how we separate the wheat from the chaff, as far as what's most essential, and what can, in many ways, be put off for a month, six months, or whatever. We will operate under sort of the existing direction that we have. It is true, no policy can identify every aspect of a perspective, and sometimes we would be coming back to the council on a case-by-case basis on particular meetings. So we do have, we do have a sort of protection built into this. Anyway.
I see staff has moved to the front. Are you wanting to make your case, or are you just moving to the front, wanting to be dismissed or not? You don't have to speak. I'm just saying, if you have something you need to say, please do. And apologies to the Buena Vista folks.
There is some timeliness to this. And one of the new elements in certainly what's identified as the utilities legislative guidelines has to do with the fiber business, and there are some issues going on on the fiber front right now that would provide guidance to both this council and you, Mayor Holman, as we move forward on some other things that are underway right now.
If this was moved to next week or two weeks out, I think two weeks out, we have some room. Is there any great damage in that?
I think we'd have to look at it. I mean, next week might be better, actually, as far as your schedule, than the 26th, just you have a couple of items like these tonight for the 26th.
So, not to prolong this, the motion on the floor is to not take up items 14 and 15 this evening, and ask you to vote on the board. So that motion passes on a seven to two vote, with council members, looks like DeBois and Welbach voting no. So, we will return to item number 12, and at this time, council members are free to ask questions of anyone who has spoken, and that would include city staff. So, Councilmember Burt, you had your light on early. Would you like to start?
My first question is, I think, directed to Ms. Nanda. Not here.
She's stepped out. We'll go to the rest room.
All right, I'll return to her in a bit. And my next one is directed to our city attorney. Do I understand it correctly that if, and maybe this is really going to answer the question I was going to ask of her, but under the rationale that Ms. Nanda made, would we potentially have 80 different appeals? In theory, if each individual resident was expected to individually determine whether they were going to have an appeal?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. You will have to ask her how she conceptualizes this ordinance, but the way we read it, it's much more straightforward than that. This is not an issue, by the way, of judicial standing. It really is a question of what this ordinance means, and it's up to this council to bring a reasonable and appropriate interpretation to it. We believe the appeal sentence in the ordinance is straightforward, and when it's read together with the definition of person in our municipal code, it's clear that a liberal right of appeal is intended. And that makes sense with the structure of the ordinance, as you're referring to it. When you get into the details of the mitigation measures that are at issue in this proceeding, you'll see that they are components, and there are individualized differences in how those play out, but essentially, it's a formula. And so, really, an appeal by some number of residents puts at issue those conceptual determinations for the whole group. It's intended that the mitigation measures be applied consistently to similarly situated folks in the park. And I don't think there's any dispute here, from the park owners' council, that the residents' association does indeed represent at least some of the residents. And in our view, that it's just really as simple as that.
Then I'll go ahead and skip past the other aspect of that question that I had. And then, this question is for Ms. Stumpf, our city attorney. As far as the procedures for governing the appeal, why are you thinking that we shouldn't allow testimony and cross-examination?
The council has discretion in how to set the procedures, but a couple of comments I can't identify in any type of proceeding that the council has held in the four years that I've been your city attorney, that's proceeded in the manner that's proposed by the park residents' association's attorneys, with actual swearing of witnesses, cross-examination, et cetera. Even the hearing officer in this case, who conducted a very thorough hearing, used a more relaxed administrative type of approach. And that is certainly what would be much more typical here. In this, in terms of what's proposed, certainly, every member of the public who wishes to speak will be given an opportunity to be heard. What's proposed is real-time Spanish translation, and that the appeal hearing be held in the evening, when people can attend. So those are not, are really in any way in question. And what we suggest is that as to evidence that had already been brought forward before the hearing officer, and fully heard, and which has been transcribed, that the council does not need to go through that process again. If the residents' association is able to identify new areas that they, you know, persuade the council they were not aware of, or did not bring forward, and now should be allowed to, our suggestion is that you consider that, and then you can allow that to that limited extent.
So then, one distinction is whether we're talking about a formal courtroom-type definition of testimony versus what we might ordinarily think of as statements by the members of the public that might, in a colloquial way, be described as testifying before us.
I think that's right, Councilmember Burt. The way we would suggest you organize it is that you give the residents' association's lawyers an opportunity to summarize and make those arguments in an organized way, as they have all along. You recall, both parties here have been represented by well-qualified attorneys, who've done, frankly, a very good job of bringing forth their clients' concerns on both sides throughout this process. So, we would suggest that you continue to rely primarily on those folks. But then, public comment has to be taken at every council meeting, and it would be taken, and gives everybody who wants to personally speak an opportunity to do that.
So finally, you alluded to not taking a rehash of testimony on, what I'm calling, allowing the public's discussion, or members of the public to address matters that were already heard, and they had a full opportunity. But if we had issues such as the revised proposal, which my understanding is they didn't have an opportunity to speak to that, or the school impacts where the hearing officer determined that that was not relevant to the relocation calculation, how would the council go about deciding what is a new topic area and appropriate for additional testimony?
Well, in a way, that question illustrates the challenge of having this kind of an appeal proceeding, again, in front of a multi-member body, you know, that has some lawyers, but frankly, mostly, you know, concerned laypeople. So, I think that what you would do is you would need to hear from the council, hear their arguments about why they feel a new piece of information needs to be brought forward, kind of outside your general framework that you've set, and hear from the other side. You typically want to hear from both sides about their response and concerns. And then you are in a position where you need to evaluate that. You can ask us questions. We may have some helpful comments and suggestions to make to you, and then you can make a decision on that. If you decide that you want to allow an additional witness to come forward, or some piece of tangible information that somehow might be relevant, that hasn't been brought forward already, you have the opportunity to continue the hearing to another night to allow that to occur.
Okay. So we would vote on those sub-issues as a body?
I believe you need to do that.
On permissibility of that? Okay, thanks.
Councilmember DeBois.
So, you know, we're asked to evaluate only some preliminary issues tonight, to determine the standing of the residents' association, set the procedures for the appeal, and direct staff to schedule the appeal. On the issue of standing, I guess in my mind, the residents' association handled the hearing, and so they should also be able to appeal. And it appears to me to be a technicality. I think you said you weren't asking for the list, but you were asking for who was not on the list, which, in my mind, that would give you the list. So, you know, I don't know, Molly, if this is a good way to think about it, but if there was concern about the standing in the association, shouldn't have that been raised during the hearing itself?
I think there were some questions about representation, but the hearing officer made, in my view, a reasonable and appropriate judgment to allow the residents' association to go forward broadly and generally, and represent the interests of the people in the park. And he was successful in convening a hearing that allowed a lot of information to come out, and really, all of the issues were fully briefed and argued by the parties. So I think it frankly worked, and you'll see, when you get the decision and the underlying record, that it's pretty thorough. So I guess I agree with you, Councilmember DeBois.
On the procedure question, if, whether it should be informal or more quasi-judicial, I think my personal opinion is quasi-judicial is appropriate. And on the question, new evidence or not, you know, I guess my personal opinion is that this is an appeal, not a rehearing, and we can't rehear three days of testimony. So we should treat it as an appeal. So we should hear new information that wasn't available, as you specified. I would like to have a discussion, and I'll make a motion at the end here, that we perhaps allow expert testimony regarding the inferences to be drawn, and the weight to be given to the evidence. And then personally, in terms of the date, I would like to push it back to March, at least. As a new council member, I could certainly use the time to come up to speed on the material. And I certainly hope we'll provide translation services. So if I'd like to make a motion that council will hear the appeal, I can email this to you if you'd like, and that council accepts proposed appeal procedures with the following change, that in section 2. E, we continue it and add the sentences, each party can have one expert testify regarding the inferences to be drawn, and the weight to be given to the evidence and the record. Each expert will be allocated 10 minutes in section 2. G, and the hearing will be scheduled on or about March 16th.
I'd second that with one request.
Perhaps, Councilmember Menace, let DeBois speak to his motion, and then you can...
I just want to make a quick request, so that I can keep my second there. I would suggest going to April. That may sound a bit long, but it sounds as though we have a great deal to do in that length of time. I've heard comments tonight about needing some extra time. I don't think that is going to compromise the way we work with this. So would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm open to that.
Okay, yes. Then I'm fine. Do you want to speak to your motion?
I think I just did. I think I'm good.
And would you care to speak to your second?
Yes, I'd like to speak to my second. I support what Councilmember DeBois is, I'm sorry.
DeBois.
Yes. I need a little, you know, pronunciation in front of me. I think this is heading in a good direction, especially looking at all of you tonight, that you really have said, although you've had some opportunity, you've really said you'd like your day in court with us. And we've heard you. And I think that's clearly very important, that that chance be given. I want to ask a couple of other things, though, and I want to make sure, Molly, now that we've, I'm sorry. Council Stumpf, that we have not compromised by going to early April. And if we have, I don't think I want to know. I think I'm going to stay within that. And also, someone described the 900 pages, and... And also, someone described the 900 pages, and I don't remember, I think it's the last attorney, did you speak of the 900 pages and the, you know, 12-inch stack? We are probably not going to get through all of that, to be honest. So I am hoping that someone will do a summary of that that is like an executive summary, because I think that would really help guide us as we go through that. So, Molly, you're looking like you're going to, like, you may not be totally supporting this. So in saying that, though, I think, I'll say it again, Councilmember DeBois has headed us in the correct direction.
So the lights I had previously were Councilmember Berman and Councilmember Scharf. I'm not going to clear the lights. I think we'll just continue with that order. So Councilmember Berman.
So I have a couple of questions for the City Attorney, maybe for others. First question, and I just don't recall it, although I think it might have been mentioned in the reporting at the time, but were the hearings, was the hearing videotaped? And is that videotape available, or is it only?
So Grant Colling, my colleague, is nodding that it was videotaped. It was also transcribed.
And is the video publicly available?
Yes, it was with the Media Center.
Okay, great. Perfect, so I'll assume it's on the website.
So we can add that to the record, then, make that available, so that you can decide how you wish to review that proceeding, either on paper or by video.
And it's an opportunity for the Council to, even if we don't redo the entire process, it's an opportunity for the Council members of the public to at least be able to view, you know, what happened live, as opposed to just having the transcript, which might take some of the emotion out of what occurred. So I just want to make sure that I'm getting this straight. So people, if the motion is adopted at the appeal, and I'm going to support the appeal, absolutely, I'm going to support having the appeal, I should say. If we have an appeal, members of the public will get an opportunity to speak for one minute, two minutes, three minutes, whatever's determined that evening, based on the number of people. So people will have an opportunity to say whatever they want to for us for a certain amount of time. Okay, I want to make sure that that was clear to everybody. I have questions about 2.0E in the appeal procedures, and I think it's important that we, the first thing I want to say, City Attorney Stumpf, is if this city council, while you're a City Attorney, or Jim, City Manager Keen, if you're ever City Manager and we go through a similar process, please make sure that in the ordinance, the process for any appeal is more clearly explained in the ordinance, so we don't have to go through this. That would have been nice. Obviously, you guys weren't here 10 years ago, so I don't blame you.
That's unusual. We appreciate that.
Don't get used to it. I don't, I want to make sure that we're understanding and very clear about the process for trying to introduce any new evidence. So is this, and I'm worried that we're going to end up in a process where, at the appeal, people will be introducing new evidence, we'll be having conversations on every new, we'll be discussing every piece of new evidence that's introduced, and nothing, we won't get anywhere, that depending on what new evidence is proposed, we could be tied up in that all night or longer. Is there a way that we can figure out what new evidence will or won't be allowed before the actual appeal occurs? And is it possible for the City Attorney's Office to take a first crack at vetting what requests are made and, you know, making a recommendation to Council for maybe Council to have a discussion on certain pieces of evidence and maybe kind of lump together other evidence that the City Attorney's Office doesn't think is new or does not warrant, you know, rediscussion? For us to then have that conversation either the night of the meeting or at a meeting before that, so that it's clear to everybody what evidence will be considered on the night of the appeal?
I think that's a very reasonable proposal. If you set this hearing as far out as April, that certainly gives the parties plenty of time. We can set a preliminary date before that for them to identify anything they believe may be new that they wish to add to the record, ask them to identify that to my office. We can package that up and evaluate that, and then we will make a series of recommendations that are hopefully fairly clear that will allow you to move through that.
And then maybe we could even discuss before, are you suggesting we discuss it that night, or is it possible for us to discuss it before the night of the appeal?
I think we won't know the answer to that until we see what the parties come up with. Frankly, while the residents' association has asked for the ability to submit new evidence, it's unclear that what evidence they believe, other than a couple of items that they've identified. So it may be that there really isn't that much, and that it can be handled in a pretty straightforward way the same evening. You know, I'd like to be mindful of the Council's time, but if the issues are lengthy or complex, then we may need to schedule another preliminary meeting.
So I'm probably going to have to suggest an amendment to the motion. And then Section 2.0E, without each party may, so I'd offer an amendment to the maker and the secondor, that at the end of what's already been added on in regards to witness' testimony, that we say, any, you know, requests for new evidence to be considered be first reviewed by the City Attorney's Office, for the City Attorney's Office to evaluate and, you know, forward on to Council with her recommendation.
Sounds fine.
Great.
And secondor?
Excellent suggestion, Councilmember Berman. I certainly concur.
Fantastic, thank you. I had another question about 3A, where it says in the second sentence, "At its discretion, the Council may direct its staff to prepare the findings and decision or request," and this is the part I have a question about, "or request that one or both parties submit a proposed decision consistent with its determination for the Council's review and adoption." Can I just get a little more clarity as to what that means?
I apologize if the sentence wasn't terribly clear. So you will, the Council will need to issue a written decision in this matter. It need not be a tremendously lengthy decision. If the Council, for example, were to largely endorse the hearing officer's quite complete decision, but then make some changes, that could, merely needs to do that. But a written decision will need to be made with findings. And so you can either direct your staff, which is essentially me and my office, to prepare that, or you can ask the parties to do that and to exchange it for comments between themselves and then consider it that way. And I think you'll know more, and we'll have a recommendation for you also, after you get through that appeal hearing that night.
Okay, so I guess, I suppose, and that'll be a decision that we'll make the night of the appeal as to what process we'll take on that?
So, again, it will depend on the timing, how many hours you've been in the chair there, and the lateness of the hour.
Sure, sure, sure. But I mean, that will be a decision that will be made at that point. The Council will make a decision as to what the process will be for how the, you know, findings and decision are written out.
That's my suggestion. Either way, what the Council will ultimately adopt is the Council's decision, regardless of who puts the initial words on the page.
So I suppose, I mean, I guess I'll say, I'm fine with leaving this in. I'm very skeptical that I'd approve of the parties doing it, but I'm open to maybe being convinced of that night, but I'm not sure that that's a process that I'll end up being comfortable with. I'll just throw that out there.
Fair enough. We will be prepared to allocate time to write the decision for you.
I guess the last question I had was 2.0F, and it says, "Written pre-hearing statements are not required. Any party wishing to submit a written pre-hearing statement not to exceed three pages shall do so no later than 14 days before the date that the appeal is scheduled to be heard." Is that meant to apply also to the Council for the different parties, or is that for members of the public? Who is that aimed at?
Oh, no, that's aimed at the Council for the parties. There's been a tremendous amount of briefing in this matter. Many of the pages that you'll get are letter briefs between the lawyers, who have really well-developed their various legal arguments. And we wish to conserve not only your eyes reading, but also the resources of folks who have to pay their lawyers in terms of not creating those documents yet again. So we suggested that you allow a very short pre-hearing statement from the lawyers.
And was 3 just chosen as a short number, or?
It was, and you can change it if you'd prefer a different number.
3 seems quite short to me. I'll propose that we change it to 10 pages, which I think is still a reasonable amount, but maybe gives the parties a little better opportunity to express, you know, whatever it is that they want to say to us in writing ahead of time. So I guess I'll offer that up as...
I guess I'll allow that as well.
Let's at least say not more than 10 pages.
Yes, not to exceed 10 pages.
Perhaps 10 pages or less.
What are another 10 pages on top of 900?
Right. All right, point well taken.
Okay, so with that, I'll be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Scharf.
Well, Councilmember Berman, I think went through all of my issues, and I agree with that. I think the 10 pages is great. I think it will provide the summary that Councilmember Niss was looking for, for both sides, will actually summarize the hearing stuff. I think we're going in a good direction. I just wanted to look at the motion. So don't we need to say we reject the, we dismiss the, don't we need to put somewhere in the motion that we actually dismiss the mobile home park owner's request to dismiss the residents' association's appeal? Do we need to say that somewhere in the motion?
Yeah, yes.
We are creating a record, so I'm...
I think it was implied in the motion, and it will be reflected in any final written findings and decisions that the Council adopts. We will include a paragraph on that, but it's good to clarify it here as well, Councilmember Scharf.
And then, do we, somewhere in the motion, need to say, do we direct staff to identify an initial appeal hearing date in April?
I believe that...
I didn't see it in there.
Okay, that's what I heard Councilmember DeBois say.
No, I heard it too. I heard him say it.
It's there. Into the first paragraph.
Oh, 2G, okay.
And it is important that we be given some leeway, because I'm sure by April, you'll have a lot of other competing items on your agenda, so please don't specify a particular date. Let us work with the parties and the clerk to find a date.
So that was the only question I had, was April, frankly, because I was watching the body language of the City Attorney, and maybe I was just, you know, misreading it. But I guess the question was, was there a reason that you were concerned not that we don't do it in, that we should do it earlier in March as opposed to April, or, I always just wanted to get some sense of that.
Given the length of the record in this case, I think that it is reasonable that the Council would get the materials and begin to review that and schedule it in April. I would really encourage you, you know, we will need to use discipline to move it at that point and not have it move out further than that, because there is a standard here of fairness to all parties, and timeliness is a part of that.
So you're comfortable with early April, then? So how soon are we going to get the record? That was the other part. I noticed we're going to get the statements 14 days before. It's 14 days before the date the appeal is scheduled to be heard. Given that much time, shouldn't we get the record and these statements maybe a little earlier?
Oh, absolutely.
So maybe the 14 days should be changed in F?
No, we will get the administrative record, so all of the material that's come before and the record of the hearing to you possibly as early as next week, maybe the week after, because we have to get the court reporter's transcripts, and now we have a video that we need to get you to. But it will come next week or the week after that, all of it, except for the additional material that you're allowing the lawyers to make a pre-hearing statement. That will come just 14 days before.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Just one clarification for City Clerk. Rather than as an amendment, I think that the, what Councilmember Scharf was talking about really is going back up to the main motion, the recommendation by staff, just change it from consider and determine, just say, reject mobile home park owner's request.
So could you add it? Council will reject this sentence and hear the appeal. That's what I meant by hear the appeal at the very beginning there, if that clarifies.
Yes, edit to the top, and it really isn't an amendment.
Council will reject the request to dismiss the rest of that sentence and hear the appeal. Up another sentence.
So could I make one follow-up comment, thinking more about what Councilmember Scharf said about the pre-hearing statement and the fact that council members might find it helpful as a way to guide you through the material? You may want, with this additional time and not having the hearing until early April, you might, may want to ask the parties to submit that three weeks instead of two weeks ahead of the hearing.
So that's actually where I was going with that. I don't know if you'd be good with that.
Could you read that?
Yes, I would like them to submit it three weeks instead of two weeks beforehand, the pre-hearing statement.
So 21 days?
21 days, correct.
No objections to that?
All right.
Okay, and does Clerk have that? Councilmember Boebach.
Following up on that last point, do we want to make sure that we announce the hearing date well more than 21 days before we set the hearing, so that the parties both have adequate time to prepare what they're going to get us 21 days before the hearing? Does that make sense?
It does, absolutely. You're correct about that, and we don't need that in a motion. We will work to select a date very soon, in the next few weeks, and make sure everyone knows about it.
That's going to be important for us to be disciplined about that. And the other question I had was, I'm curious to hear my colleague's thoughts on, actually two things. Well, one is actually a question about procedure. During the hearing, would there be any opportunity for council members to ask questions of the parties' attorneys? Or is it just they give their presentations and rebuttals, and then it's only up for our discussion?
Absolutely, you may ask questions, and you should do that if you have them.
Okay, and lastly, knowing us, knowing the process, I'm highly skeptical about these time allotments. The 10 minutes for additional, the 30 minutes for each side, and the 15 minutes for rebuttals, I think that's extremely optimistic, or at least maybe we should specify or make clear that there will be additional time needed after this. Perhaps it's not necessary because it's implied, but...
We stipulate that.
What's that?
We stipulate it.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
Yeah, just like tonight.
Never mind, then.
I see no other lights. Councilmember Burt, do you have anything additional?
So I don't either. I think we're ready for a vote, and to make this clear to everyone, it's been suggested by members of the public that the motion be read into the record, because, just so everybody knows, because the screen isn't always shown on, by Media Center, and because people listening on radio don't know what we're doing. So Councilmember DeBois moved, seconded by Councilmember Niss, that Council reject mobile home park owner's request to dismiss the residents' association's appeal of the hearing officer's decision on the closure application, and will hear the appeal. Council accepts proposed appeal procedures found on Packet 12J, Packet Attachment 12J. Section 2.0E is changed as it is added language to, excuse me, to adding the sentence, "Each party may have one expert testify regarding the inferences to be drawn and the weight to be given to the evidence in the record. Each expert will be allotted 10 minutes in Section 2.0G." Quote-unquote, "The hearing will be scheduled on or about April 2015. Any requests for new evidence shall be submitted to the City Attorney's Office, who will analyze the proposed evidence and prepare a summary for Council." And Section 2.0F is amended to indicate that rather than 14 days, pre-hearing statements will be submitted 21 days ahead, and that those submittals will not exceed 10 pages. So I think we captured everything. So all those in favor, put it on the board. So, all those in favor, throw on the board. And that passes unanimously. So that concludes this item, and I suggest the council take a five-minute break while the room probably clears with all the people who've been here to speak to this item.
Live from the Palo Alto City Council chambers, council's been busy early on with the pre-meeting, dealing with the electrification of CalTrains and the effect that it has on neighboring traffic. We went through representatives of CalTrain. Council not happy with what it could do to, it's sort of that bailiwick that environmentalists and conservationists get into. You want more trains, you want to get those cars off the road, but when it comes to Palo Alto, because it's such a hub, it actually creates more traffic. As we heard from Bob Moss talking about more trains in the Charleston area, and even on the back roads, they really pile up, and saying the CalTrain needs to pay for that. And of course, we also heard from a great Stanford student who really represented the Stanford community well, because, you know, Stanford, if you're an employee of Stanford, you get those CalTrain passes, and they use, with the margaritas, they use CalTrain often. And a lot of students, grad students, undergrad students, they take the CalTrain north to the city a lot to experience the city life, so the city life, they're not getting in Palo Alto, that is. You have to leave Palo Alto, right? So, and they were so thankful for the electrification of CalTrain. Then, we went on to a great tribute to one of Palo Alto's best, I mean, Greg Betts. And it was great hearing from these kids, who he helped in the theater, and these kids are just amazing, what they were, their tributes were just amazing. And Allison Williams said, you know, you don't follow animals or kids, and these kids, these kids are going to be, they're going to be the next James Franco, or they're definitely going to make it to the city council. He served the citizens of Palo Alto for over three decades, innovative, compassionate, customer-focused, successful programs, foster strategic partnerships, enhance community assets, measurable customer satisfaction. It was Liz Niss who gave a nice tribute to him, having known him for many, many years. He started as a volunteer in 1972 with animal services, and then part-time employee during high school and college. In 83, he was hired as a superintendent of animal services. He ultimately joined the community services department. Community services Greg worked tirelessly to connect stakeholders and create partnerships, many stewardesses, stewardship programs, habitat restoration projects, grant funding, expanse Wi-Fi, magical bridge, universal access playground at Mitchell Park, expansion of dedicating heritage park, Bresler property and restoration preserve, enlarging foothill parks, the Beta Bridge Trail. He really was everywhere, Baylands, the skyline. Nice tribute from a fellow Palo Alto employee there, who spoke about how he was just so great with customer service, really represented the city well, public outreach, long planning efforts, park and facility design, restoration preserve, educational gateway facility, Mitchell Park Community Center, citywide parks, open space trails, planning process for the next 30 years of Palo Alto recreational facilities. He developed the pet adoption counseling and screening protocols when he was in animal services, animal control services with neighboring cities, and implemented the microchip program for pet recovery. So kids like him, dogs like him. The city council recognized him tonight for his tireless enthusiastic commitment to the people of Palo Alto and thanked him for his 31 years of dedicated service on their behalf. Pack Palo Alto tonight, we got a pretty big show here, and then all the pubs and bars packed, watching the national championship game of football between Oregon State Buckeyes and the Ohio State Buckeyes and the Oregon Ducks. I saw a big guy with a duck outfit walking into the old pro, as I was on my way here. So the Ohio State, well, if it comes to politics, it's Ohio, California, Florida, Texas, right? They're all the football states. So it was, but it was not a California team, it was an Oregon team that took on Ohio, and Ohio State won. And the governor, who was re-elected, Governor Kasich, Republican, made sure that he took his oath of office on midnight Sunday and had the party all around the Ohio State Buckeyes game, because he's an Ohio State Buckeye. So that was big for them. Tonight, the council is going to move along. They had a couple of legislative items they have pushed out, and tonight we heard about CalTrain, we heard oral communications, and we heard the Buena Park story again. It has been through hearings, it has been through sort of a trial before, but we heard from the residents. It is the only mobile park in Palo Alto. A lot of, certainly the people who came and spoke overwhelmingly for getting another hearing on appeal, how they're going to do it after 900 pages, the devil's definitely in the details there, because they've already had a hearing, they already had a hearing, officers. This is something that could go on for a long time, very emotional, very tough stuff. But the Jessup's attorney pointed out that this is legal, Palo Alto has that ordinance, this is something they can do, they followed the law all along, and the, this is something that should, they should be able to do. The owner is in legal right of doing it. So how does the council come into it when they hear all these emotional stories of Palo Altans and Palo Altans from neighboring parks, neighboring areas, who know people from Buena Vista, they went to the Posada, it's a big part of Palo Alto, it's been there for many, many years? Boy, are they going to be getting the reimbursement so that the owner can move ahead? The whole idea of can the kids stay in Palo Alto schools? That's something that I would think would have to go to the school board. They would have to get involved in that. If they leave the area, if they're down in Mountain View or they're down in San Jose, you know, can they still attend Palo Alto schools? But what happens to their jobs? Most of them are working locally. So it goes to the whole compassionate Palo Alto and diversity and a lot of issues. But then again, it is, you know, obviously, a mobile park, a mobile home's really, it's really the working poor, because a mobile home, if you take a real estate class, most real estate people say, don't get into a mobile home, but for many people, that is how the American dream does start, and you start from that point and build up. And, but, as the attorney for the residents mentioned, it isn't really a mobile home. It doesn't really move, it's not easy to move a mobile home. And, but mobile home parks in these areas, the few that are still around are expensive. You know, return $150,000, $90,000. So it's a real, you're really uprooting 400 people who've been there for a long time. But legally, it can be done, and it is ownership, and it is the owner's property. And, but, it's not, it's not like it's a business that's shutting down and you go find another job. It's, people live there, it's very, very tough. So right out of the chute, the council is getting something very, very tough, but they won't have to deal with it till April, which Tom DeBois, first time we've heard from him tonight, we didn't hear from him last week, new council member, made the motion, it was seconded by Niss, lot of questions by Pat Burke in response to the attorney, Nanda's for the association, saying, you know, this has already been done, there are residents who are going to take the buyout or take it, who are not part of the association, you can't do it that way. So basically, she went for saying that the block of residents is not that united, that there's some kind of breakdown there, and therefore, a city would not be able to go to each individual group. So also translators here for Spanish, and I think Telemundo's here, or Noticias is here. So very emotional part of tonight's hearing. We're going to hear it again, how they're going to do that will be tough, and then the decision will be a tough one. That'll be in the spring. I'm Vince Mark, and we are going to be off next Monday night. There'll be no broadcast of the Palo Alto City Council Monday night, it is Martin Luther King Day, but we're on for a special Tuesday night broadcast, special Tuesday night broadcast, the 20th, Tuesday, the 20th, we're there, and then we go back to our regular broadcast on Monday night till we hit President's Day in February. So we are here next Monday night, or next Tuesday, no broadcast next Monday, but we're on a special Tuesday night broadcast next Monday night of the Palo Alto, next Tuesday night of the Palo Alto City Council. That would be Tuesday, January 20th, bike and pedestrian implementation status, ongoing projects, recognition of Mitchell Park Library, grand opening of volunteers, policy and services procedures for closed session, policy and services recommendation to adopt an ordinance increasing salaries of $600 to $1,000 a month. And then Monday, January 26th, we're back. So we're next Tuesday, then following Monday, the 26th, and that has to do with presentation of the city of Palo Alto IT strategy, approval of a mitigated negative declaration site, review, enhancement exception, application for three-story mixed building, 27,000 square sites, service commercial at 441 Page Mill, project will contain 21,540 square feet of commercial space, 91 off-street parking spaces, 10 apartment units, including three below-market rate units, and request for three off-menu concessions under the Palo Alto Municipal Code, and then a staff regarding the establishment of an office R&amp;D growth. Then we're the retreat, the Palo Alto City Council usually takes a retreat, it's usually earlier, but this year it's a little bit later, it's going to be Saturday, the 31st, at Mitchell Park Community Center at 9:00 AM. They're there all day, putting together their priorities for the year, so they're very busy. Monday, February 2nd, we're on the air, study session with the library commission, then West Bay Opera, Lucy Stern Theater, special orders of the day, Palo Alto Ride Share Program for future enterprise resources evaluation recommendation information technology utilities, reporting on the technology connected with city initiatives, including the status of the city's request for proposals for a fiber-to-the-premise master plan and wireless network plan, status of the city's response to the Google Fiber City checklist. Then Monday, February 9th, another broadcast of the council, quiet zones, the action, a study session, pre-meeting on that, and then public hearing adoption of a resolution implementing new development impacts, review to consider potential revisions to policy and procedure, transfer of surplus city-owned property, finance committee recommendation to accept the fiscal year 2016 to 2025, general fund, long-range financial forecast. And then the 16th is President's Day, Washington's birthday, Lincoln's birthday, and then I don't know if we have another broadcast Tuesday, or we go to the following, but that's what we've got. Oregon, Ohio State is the national champion of the college football world. We are here in Palo Alto, where we have more action coming up with the brand-new Palo Alto City Council. Karen Holman, the 13th woman mayor of the city of Palo Alto presiding. Greg Schmidt is the vice mayor, and we've got a council that is ready to go.
Reconvene. If we could, please, council members, council members and a few members of the public. We are ready to reconvene and take up item 13, which is a letter commenting on the draft EIR, or Environmental Impact Report, an environmental assessment for VTA bus rapid transit. Staff has a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Holman, members of the council. My name is Jaime Rodriguez, I'm the chief transportation official. Given the lateness of the item being presented this evening, we're actually going to forego the presentation. Within your staff report packet, there is a very detailed letter covering, you know, a couple dozen points that city staff had put together after reviewing the draft environmental impact report for the project, and we would love to hear your comments on that tonight. The comment letter back to the VTA is due Wednesday, the 14th, so we would appreciate your feedback this evening, and if the letter looks okay with modifications, we can get that back to Mayor Holman for signature. Thank you.
Council members, questions, comments, motion? Councilmember Scharf? Councilmember Scharf moved approval of the letter. Councilmember Niss seconded that. Councilmember Scharf, would you care to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I read it, I read through it, and I thought you did a great job, Jaime. I mean, I think it's comprehensive, it goes through everything, it's, you know, it sets the right tone, so I actually didn't have any changes, so I just thought I'd set the stage on this, and if other council members have, you know, comments, concerns, you know, feel free.
You know, we do have to hear from the public yet.
Which is, which is great, but I would just remind the council the schedule again. Within an hour, you will need to get this letter in by tomorrow, so that's, puts it in perspective.
So, well, since there's a motion on the floor, I think if I could, with Councilmember Burton DeBois's permission, we'll go to, unless you have questions. Because we do have members of the public who'd like to speak to this item. Okay, Councilmember DeBois, are you fine with that? Yes. Okay, so we will go to the members of the public. You will have three minutes to speak. The first speaker is Bob Moss, to be followed by Charisse Malabran.
Thank you, Mayor Holman and council members. The first point I'd like to make is that I agree with the city's opposition to dedicated bus lanes, that would be a disaster in Palo Alto, and I think we should make that very clear in all of our responses to VTA. I occasionally drive down El Camino during rush hour, 5:30, 5:45 in the evening, and traffic is absolutely jammed. We move along when we do move at 5 or 10 miles an hour, and the street is a mess, and the same is true during the morning. So narrowing it from three lanes to two would significantly impact traffic, and would cause a lot more diversion onto residential streets than the VTA suggests, and even that the report comments on. As an example, when I'm driving down El Camino in the afternoon and we get jammed, I duck off and go down on residential side streets. I'm not going to name the streets, because I don't want to give anybody any clues, but there are residential streets that I drive through, both in Ventura and Barron Park, strictly to get off of the heavy traffic on El Camino, and I'm sure other people are doing the same thing. So the problem that we would have if the street is narrowed from three lanes to two would be immense, and the traffic diversion counts are understated. Another thing that's not mentioned on the report is that you'd also clog up some of the cross streets, like Meadow and Charleston, because people will get off of El Camino and take those streets to go up to Alma or to Middlefield in order to avoid taking El Camino. So it's going to worsen those intersections and those streets, and that's not discussed at all. So I think we should make it very clear that a dedicated bus lane would be a disaster in Palo Alto, and we want no part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Charisse Malabran, to be followed by Chris, looks like Lepe.
Good evening, Mayor Holman, and our members of the city council. My name is Charisse Malabran, Director of Community Development with Working Partnerships USA. Working Partnerships is a community organization that employs research and policy advocacy to advance campaigns for equitable growth, healthy communities, and quality jobs. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this important measure this evening. We support BRT with dedicated lanes, because it allows Palo Alto to accommodate future growth and best-serve constituents. growth and best-serve constituents who would benefit from faster, more frequent, and reliable bus service. From 2010 to 2040, Palo Alto is estimated to grow by an additional 30,000 jobs, thus 33%, excuse me, in job growth. We need the workforce to travel to and from their place of employment in Palo Alto via alternative transportation methods and not promote additional 30,000 cars on Palo Alto streets. BRT is a viable alternative. And while many Palo Alto residents may travel by car, there are still those who are transit-dependent. Bus riders are an organized group, excuse me, reflective of the populations that our organization represents. Riders are mostly low-income, with 58% earning less than $20,000, $25,000 annually. They're generally young, with the majority being under the age of 35. And 76% are people of color, which represents 40% of your constituents. To have a greater sense of the transit needs, we surveyed more than 500 bus riders along El Camino from May through July of 2014. When asked what would encourage them to use the bus more often, 58% cited the need for more frequent bus service, another 52% wanted faster service, and 35% expressed needing more reliable service. While BRT with dedicated lanes is not a perfect proposal, and much still has to be worked out, it is a promising opportunity to not only enhance local transportation infrastructure, but to also address the current traffic congestion and to prepare for forthcoming growth. We urge the city council to support BRT with dedicated lanes, specifically alternatives 4C, A, or B, which will advance a vision for progress and innovation. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Lepe, to be followed by Edie Keating.
Hello. Chris Lepe here with Transform. Transform is a nonprofit organization, we're a land use and transportation advocacy organization working to help solve the climate crisis and try to connect people to opportunity and address the affordability crisis that we're seeing here in the Bay Area. I'm not sure, but I sent a letter from our coalition. We have a bus rapid transit coalition. Not sure if you received it, but I have some additional copies here handy. And so in the letter, basically what we cover, it's a letter signed on by the Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning, Transform, the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, Friends of Caltrain, Urban Habitat Working Partnerships, California WALKs, Green Belt Alliance, and Sacred Heart Community Services. And essentially what we state is that we're going to grow, right? We have 33% growth in employment and 36% growth in population. That is coming to Santa Clara County in the coming decades, and we need to accommodate that growth. If we do nothing, I think that's an important question to ask. If we don't implement these kind of transportation initiatives, what happens? What the EIR clearly shows is that in Palo Alto, as well as other corridor cities, if we do nothing, the traffic is going to get worse. 41% of intersections analyzed on and off the corridor in the draft EIR degrade by more than five seconds without BRT in 2040. In Palo Alto, 23% of intersections analyzed in 2040 on the corridor, and 37% off the corridor will degrade by more than five seconds without BRT. So we need to ask ourselves, if we don't implement these kind of solutions, then what happens? Clearly, doing nothing is not the answer for climate change. It's not the answer for giving people more options to get out of their cars, to get out of the traffic. It's not a solution to the affordability crisis that we're seeing, which housing and transportation are the two key costs for families in the Bay Area. So aside from that, I also wanted to mention a few recommendations or thoughts in regards to the draft EIR. One is to complement the improved, vastly improved transit service on El Camino with better north-south connecting bus routes to further boost ridership, and that would be a good recommendation for VTA. Also, designing the BRT project, I don't know if this is a possibility, in such a way that you can actually accommodate high occupancy buses and shuttles to further boost the mode share via high occupancy modes of travel, including perhaps, for example, the Marguerite Shuttle in some future occasion. Implementing traffic calming measures on sensitive residential streets, for example, if there might be some streets with schools where there is a concern about cut-through traffic, where there might be some traffic diversion. Implementing hot lanes on expressways and segments prone to congestion to encourage carpooling and use of other modes to further shift more people onto other modes. Implementing additional signalized intersection, mid-block crossings to allow for more permeability on the corridor as well. So those are some suggestions from a progressive transportation planning standpoint. Thank you.
And thank you. Edie Keating, to be followed by Vanessa Warhite.
Edie Keating. At times, I've been a Caltrain commuter. Currently, I work in Foster City, and all the different connections I have to make don't work very well. So I am a car-driving commuter. And you would think I'd be here to say, you know, save the lanes for cars, but it works out. I mean, for myself, I have almost no bad impact on my commute because I've shifted my time a little bit. I've convinced my employer I'm a good employee who gets there by 10 o'clock. And so for me, it's probably bus rapid transit going into another county in my direction is not going to change my commute. But the bus rapid transit lanes would really appeal to me in the weekend to reveal what an exciting life I have. I go visit most weekends, you know, for an afternoon, my ex-mother-in-law. She lives in Santa Clara. And when we didn't have the 522 bus, the express bus, I would never take the bus down there. And I still don't take it all the time, but I do occasionally say, I've got some extra time, and I will take the 522 when I go. She lives only a block away from it. And it's pleasant. I enjoy the bus. And if the bus is faster, yes, I will take it more often. And El Camino, there's so many things on El Camino that are destinations, that are places to go to. Many other people will take it, just as many people driving cars on El Camino. And I would have to say that when there is gridlock, and there may be slightly more gridlock at first, if the bus rapid transit is put in place, but people notice the buses or the train going by. And so that temporary, that pain should be viewed as temporary and as an opportunity for people to switch to, not all of them will switch, but many will, either to the bus rapid transit or the different times, and hopefully not to the residential streets. There are many options, and bus rapid transit will get more people out of their cars. I think you should consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vanessa Warhite, to be followed by Adina Levin, who is our final speaker.
Hi, thank you. World-class cities have good public transit. And to most people, and this is backed up by research, good transit means transit that is fast and frequent. And that requires a dedicated right-of-way. I'm really proud of our decision as a city to take our greenhouse gas emissions seriously. I'm really excited by the possibility of a Palo Alto zero-carbon moonshot. I just want to remind everyone again, 40% of our carbon footprint comes from transportation. So clearly, we need meaningful, good transit. So I'm here speaking in strong support of option 4C, a dedicated lane on El Camino. As people have pointed out, whether we like it or not, our region is growing. Even if we manage to somehow clamp it down here in Palo Alto, it's growing all around us. And the traffic is bad now, and it's going to get worse without some meaningful intervention. And adding more lanes only creates more traffic. Traffic acts like a gas and not a liquid. It does not just spill off somewhere else. If you compress it and offer alternatives, it does go away. They have shown this in city after city. We need a vision here in Palo Alto for how to address this inevitable growth in our region and provide our future generations with a functional, beautiful, zero-carbon city. And I believe that implementing bus rapid transit in conjunction with an electrified Caltrain line is what we need to begin to fulfill this vision. I've heard concerns in the past that BRT will just duplicate Caltrain, but really, after what we've heard tonight from Caltrain, I think it's clear that even with electrification, Caltrain is going to max out. And that concerns me a lot. We're going to need additional capacity north-south, and we need the kind of rapid implementation at relatively low cost that bus rapid transit offers. Another reason I'm in support is that dedicated lane, option 4C, provides a dedicated bicycle lane, which is desperately needed. Nobody in their right mind would ride on El Camino right now on a bicycle, but having a protected bicycle lane is hugely important and valuable to us as a city. So I would urge council just to push VTA to extend this lane through all of Palo Alto and to allow zero-carbon bicycles the same access to this public throughway that private cars now enjoy. I also want to point out that having a dedicated lane means consistent scheduling, which means that VTA can actually have something to rely on when trying to have feeder routes and coordinating with other shuttles in many of the cities up and down the peninsula. And lastly, I just want to say that buses get a bad rap. So trains are really sexy, and buses are not, but bus rapid transit is different precisely because it has a dedicated lane. Otherwise, it's just a BT. You need the dedicated lane to be rapid. Good transit means speedy and frequent transit, and you only get that with a train or with a bus with a dedicated lane. It's time to stop prioritizing cars and give some of our public right-of-way to public transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Adina Levin, who's our final speaker.
Good evening, council member. I'd like to build on something that Edie just said in terms of, as someone with a car, she uses the 522 on the weekend because it's practical for her. And, you know, that's really how people make decisions. If a bus service or transit service is time-competitive with driving, people with a choice will use the service. That was a lesson that we learned with the Caltrain baby bullet service, that as soon as it was really clearly a superior option to driving a car, that's when ridership has more than doubled. And also, in terms of what will drive people to use El Camino, one of the questions that people ask is, well, gee, people, not everybody lives near El Camino, but actually quite a number do. 34% of Palo Alto residents live within a half a mile of El Camino, and 45% of Mountain View, the next town down the line, also live within a half a mile of El Camino. So that is a lot of people living near El Camino who could use it to go about commuting and also about errands and ordinary trips. I really like the suggestion that Chris Lepe made regarding using, being able to use the lane for shuttles, not only Marguerite, but for the increased shuttle service that's being considered with the Palo Alto TMA. Palo Alto's overall strategy to reduce driving through a transportation policy and also to focus thinking in the comprehensive plan regarding sustainability is another reason why this is a good fit with Palo Alto's existing policies to help people get out of cars. So the summary is, if it is practical, people will use it, and the things that are feared will not come to pass, and will wind up with more people not driving, less carbon. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll return to council. And Councilmember Burt?
Yes. So one issue was a question, I didn't, I don't recall seeing in the letter any reference to the impact of Caltrain's, the impacts just accepted under Caltrain's EIR on traffic on Alma, which would be compounded by the dedicated lane. And that's essentially new information because they just adopted it. And that would impact, well, I said Alma, but it's actually Alma and cross streets like Charleston and Meadow. And the other thing is that I was glad there was a reference to some of the, looking at alternative initiatives, because I'll just use this as a comment. If we, if we're looking at how do we drive additional ridership on VTA buses, one way to help do that is to have dedicated lanes, even if it may displace a third of the automobile capacity that's presently fairly full on El Camino. But the other way is with the ecopasses. And I just want to make sure everybody knows, and we are pursuing with them authorization to have our Transportation Management Agency be able to purchase ecopasses as a single entity, which would mean that because we're in an area not served by light rail, that's $18 a year for anyone who gets unlimited VTA bus service, or $1.50 per month. And Adina spoke about 34% of our residents being within a half mile. So even if we narrowed that, if it was 10,000 workers or residents who received ecopasses and they used them at a fairly small uptake, that would be a big impact, and I suspect significantly outweigh the additional boardings that would occur from a dedicated lane.
Councilmember Burt, did you intend an amendment to the letter?
Oh, yeah, I guess I should put it in that way, that to ask staff to include a reference to the impact of Caltrain's EIR, the ramifications of that EIR on congestion that would compound the additional congestion on side streets resulting from a dedicated lane.
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. Hillary Gittleman, the planning director, we'd be happy to add that to point number 12 in the letter that talks about the congestion on Alma Street, so we can broaden that point.
Great.
And you might want to help, help the clerk with the language. Councilmember DeVois. I'm sorry. Is that amendment, as best you can tell, is that amendment acceptable to the maker and second of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good addition.
So with respect to the public speakers, my perception is that residents in Palo Alto are already feeling compressed, and we shouldn't remove a car lane or add a bike lane on El Camino. And for bikes, I think we have Safer Bike Boulevards that parallel El Camino. And a lot of ways, this discussion feels similar to the electrification discussion we just had. Feels like VTA is ignoring Palo Alto. I know council gave feedback in earlier meetings. And so I have a process question, which is, this is the draft EIR. I guess this would come back to us in a final EIR. What's the process?
Thank you, Councilmember DeVois. The lead agency will have to respond in writing to all the comments we submit on the draft, and then we'll have an opportunity to review the final and ensure that our comments have been addressed.
So, and I'm just curious, I really appreciate the letter. I thought it was excellent. Who wrote it? Was it you? Yeah. Well-written.
We should acknowledge Shala Yatsi on our staff, and Jaime and I, we were kind of all tag-teaming this over the holidays.
Yeah. So I really appreciate it. Now, one suggestion I have is, for me, I feel like the headline is buried, which for me is point 20, which talks about the last meeting with the council. And, you know, and basically, it's making Palo Alto's point that we're not in favor of the dedicated lanes, which is my understanding. So if it's acceptable, I would like to make a motion that we really emphasize point 20. And I would like to add to the introductory paragraph at the end, and I've emailed this to David already, hopefully it came through. Due to lack of mitigation of serious impacts to Palo Alto traffic, Palo Alto opposes the dedicated lanes, and VTA should implement suggested alternatives first, and then move point 20 to point 1. And then I actually think we should state clearly which alternative we want. And I would propose either alternative 3A or 4B.
And I think you need to, if you would, state those again, please, so the clerk can catch up.
Yes, he's pulling it up. And get that last sentence there, too. So there were two other things, David, is move point 20 to point 1.
I don't think we're getting to explode.
Mr., Councilmember Scharf?
Not explode, dedicated lane.
Yeah.
Yep. I meant dedicated lane, I'm sorry. I meant dedicated lane, I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry, did you, did you want to include, change the tone of the letter to emphasize, or you just wanted to make that point in the introduction?
You can start with add to the end of the introductory paragraph. And then I was suggesting a third point, which, if you'd be willing to consider, it was state clearly Palo Alto wants either alternative three A or four B.
Just to, just to follow that point, I mean, there is a significant difference between three A and four B. Four B basically has a dedicated lane up to, or almost up to, the Palo Alto border, where three A is the shortest dedicated lane. So they're pretty different outside of our jurisdiction.
Yeah. Okay, you can just say four B. That makes more sense, which is the showers, drive.
Why do we care? I mean, what they choose up to that point?
I don't think we care, I just wanted to propose a specific alternative.
But they're outside of our jurisdiction, other communities may prefer.
Four B is the one that comes closest to our border, so it would be up to them to go that far or not.
I guess I'm not okay with what alternative, to say which alternative we want. I'm good with everything else up to that.
Okay, I'll strike, strike that last sentence.
So offered as amendments are the add to the introductory paragraph, that language, and then move point twenty in order to point one. Councilmember Scharf has agreed, has accepted those as amendments. Councilmember Ness?
Fine. The last one, you may remove, right?
You need your mic on.
As much as I appreciate this, and I'll support that, I'm still well aware that we don't have total jurisdiction over this. We're making suggestions, and the final decisions will end up being made because it's a state, state road, it will be made by VTA and others. So I think when we send this, just as when we're dealing with Caltrain electrification, what we're hoping is that our influence will be sufficient, because our governance isn't, if that all makes sense.
Councilmember Wobak?
A couple of things. I generally am supportive of the motion and am generally supportive of the amendments, I'll probably end up supporting it, just kind of as a thing going forward to think about, and I do have one specific recommended change. I actually do disagree with Councilmember Scharf. I'm not thrilled with the tone, I think it's snarky, and it doesn't really help us build better partnerships and relationships. Not saying we shouldn't be very clear about some of our concerns, which I do think the letter does a very good job of articulating. I think the letter does a very good job of laying out a number of questions that were not adequately addressed in the EIR, and I think it also lays out a number of things that should be considered, they haven't been. But I just want to make sure, you know, whether we're talking about, you know, again, with Caltrain or with VTA, as much influence as Palo Alto has despite our relative small population size for the region, I just want to be cognizant of the fact that we want to make friends and influence people and not just complain and not end up getting what we want. So in interest of that, I would actually recommend just striking one line that I think will just turn a lot of readers off without actually getting us anything. It's item number six, where it says, is today's ridership seventy-three percent greater than ridership in nineteen ninety? I would just strike that sentence, just because I don't think it's useful, and I think it will really hurt the reader's feelings, unfortunately. That's something you've got to be sensitive to, if you want people to, to be collaborative partners. So that's a change that I'd recommend. I don't know how you guys feel about striking that one sentence.
Councilmember Scharf, would you accept that as an amendment?
Well, I agree, it's better not to have a snarky tone and to make friends, I'm all for that. I guess I would ask staff if maybe, if there's any value in saying, in keeping that, is today's ridership, is that a question we, because they have to answer the question, so I mean, I think it's worthwhile. I'm not sure we need, please explain, but if you don't need it, we can strike it. We can strike it?
We don't need it.
Okay, then, get rid of it.
Councilmember Ness?
Well, actually, I had a couple.
She has to accept it. Okay.
If the maker and the moker is comfortable with that, and if Councilmember Wobak feels this is snarky, then I'm certainly persuaded.
Okay, back to you, Councilmember Wobak.
Also, I just wanted to ask, I don't know how much capacity there is for doing it, but how much is reducing medians an option that was considered here? I don't know if you guys can speak to that at all, in order to create space for things like bike lanes, you know, in the fear of losing a lane of traffic, or having to pick between a bike lane, or parking, or, you know, only get one of the above, you know, parking, bike lane, dedicated bus lane. How much capacity does El Camino have for reduction of the median and using space there? And was that adequately explored, do you feel, by the EIR, by the draft EIR?
Thank you, Councilmember Wobak. The EIR specifically looks at, you know, two types of configurations. One is that mixed flow operation, the other one is the dedicated lane. They didn't go as far as trying to lay out, you know, other alternatives, say, for just a bike, and that would be a different type of project that wasn't part of this EIR. That's something that I think the city will be doing over time in pieces, is implementing out parts of its bicycle boulevard program, and we'll be doing parts of that for Charleston and Mayville, for example, in this coming year. And so we will be doing parts of that for that specific focus on our own, but this EIR did not do that.
And as far as, just as far as the capacity of El Camino Real to accommodate any median reductions, in order to accommodate either an extra bus lane or any additional space for any of the many things that we'd like to see on El Camino Real, is there any capacity on El Camino Real to do that, and was that explored by the EIR, in your opinion?
It wasn't explored. I apologize, it was not explored as part of the CIR.
Do you think that there's any worth in adding something, you know, asking them to explore that as an option to?
The EIR does look, because it looks at the mixed flow and the dedicated lane, it does look at capacity in the sense that in the dedicated lane option, you lose the median and you lose the ability to either have parking or a bike lane, because there's just so much right of way there. To fit all that in, you start losing existing components. In the mixed flow, you don't have those same impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Just a simple suggestion. Number twelve talks about congested Alma Street. Thirteen talks about overflowed of Middlefield. It seems to me Foothill Expressway is another alternative that is already in congested shape. So I would suggest just adding a simple sentence about Foothill Expressway. Might?
I'm fine with it, as long as Jaime thinks it's fine.
Can you provide?
We can add that in.
Can you provide where you would like to insert that?
Well, just the, the overflow will certainly affect the heavily congested Foothill Expressway.
I was just gonna say, on your suggestion for item thirteen, that seems to be the right location for it.
Okay, on thirteen, Councilmember Scharf has approved that. Councilmember Ness?
If I heard it correctly, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so seeing no more lights. Oh, Councilmember Berman?
So, so I appreciate and agree with a lot of the requests for information, or requests for, you know, justification of analyses that are in the letter. I think, I think those are very warranted, and if we have concerns about the data that we're being provided, or, you know, if we want to see the raw data behind it, which by the way, notice number three, we say the city requests that the raw data upon which the DEIR was based be made available for comparison. Is that, does that normally happen, or is that normally not happened? Is that a, I mean, is that a abnormal request that we're asking for, or is it?
It is a normal request for us, for cities to ask for additional type of data.
I'm sorry, anormal or abnormal?
It is normal.
It is normal, thank you.
It is normal, yes.
Thank you. So, you know, I mean, I think those are all good. I've got to admit, I do have problems with, you know, I feel like we're saying, you know what, dedicated, dedicated lanes are good for other cities, and they're not good for Palo Alto. And, and, you know, we say that in section twenty, where we say, you know, this, during the presentation of this, which I think is now section one, during the presentation of the city council on November seventeenth, twenty fourteen, blah, 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 this perspective is extremely troubling to the city of Palo Alto, given the ridership increases projected, even with small segments of dedicated lanes south of Palo Alto, VTA can make significant improvements to their service in the El Camino corridor while remaining sensitive to the community context. Well, are we saying remain sensitive to our community context, but not other communities' contexts? I kind of feel like that's what we're saying here. And so I'm not, I mean, I'm going to support this because I support ninety-five percent of it, but, but I just want to be on record as saying, you know, I think it's the same thing, kind of, in the introductory paragraph, where we say Palo Alto is excited to see the VTA pursuing improved transit alternatives for the region, just so long as they're not bad in Palo Alto. And I guess that's kind of, I mean, you know, we represent the city of Palo Alto, and that's, that's our job, but I feel like we're saying it in a way that's really, it rubs me a little wrong in certain, in certain places. So I'm not going to bother making a motion because I know I won't win it, and I'm not going to bother trying to amend it because I know I won't win it, but I just want to, you know, say, I think we should really be cognizant of what we sound like in some of these documents, especially when we're asking for more information. You know, this isn't, this isn't final yet, so.
Councilmember Wobak?
Yeah, actually, I am going to suggest a motion maybe to find a way to accommodate what Councilmember Berman is saying with the amendments that Councilmember DeBois had proposed earlier. There might be a way to, to mesh these. What if we amended the bit where it says Palo Alto opposes dedicated lanes, period, VTA should implement suggested alternatives first? What if we changed that to say Palo Alto opposes dedicated lanes along the portion of El Camino Real within Palo Alto until pilot programs experimenting with suggested alternatives have been tested first, or something like that? Would that, would, how would the mover and the secondor feel about that? Basically saying, you know, we're not talking about what's happening outside of Palo Alto, we're talking about, you know, opposing dedicated lanes within Palo Alto, and we're saying there are some other great options, like the ones that Councilmember Robert has emphasized, that we haven't explored, VTA hasn't explored those, and we should definitely explore those prior to even considering dedicated lanes within Palo Alto.
Councilmember Scharf?
I'm okay with that. I mean, basically what you're saying is that we're opposed, we oppose dedicated lanes until after they've proven that, that it works, and they come back to us. We may still oppose it then, but.
Right.
Madam Mayor, if I could just, that's a little bit of what we were trying to say in that last sentence, where we say we would support efforts to expand transit service, but only if significant impacts within our city can be effectively mitigated. So I know it's said a little differently than you're suggesting, but.
So is that just foresee, when we just say Palo Alto opposes foresee?
Yeah, so yeah, that's an easy way, yeah, instead of, yeah, just change where it says Palo Alto opposes dedicated lanes, just say Palo Alto opposes foresee?
I mean, I don't know, since that was my amendment, do I get to comment on it?
But that's, that's my suggestion, but how do you guess?
I, I mean, I think the first paragraph that Hillary pointed out already says, I think, to agree with what you're saying, and my preference would be to end that paragraph kind of short and sweet. And again, my, my point was to be kind of clear by saying we oppose dedicated lanes, and that they should implement alternatives first, and I didn't sort of want to make that too long, too complicated. I think we only speak for Palo Alto, so whether other cities want dedicated lanes or not, it's kind of up to them. We're not really making a comment on whether they should have lanes or not have lanes.
I just worry it'll be read as us saying that we oppose dedicated lanes everywhere.
Right. So I would accept Cory's amendment, and if you want to make a non-friendly amendment on that.
If I'm correct, you're looking for a more precise and also kinder, gentler way to say it, correct?
Yeah, like, you could really just add like two words, you know, Palo Alto opposes dedicated lanes in Palo Alto.
That's fine, too.
That's okay, I like that better than foresee.
I think that's good, good.
Two words, keep it simple.
Yeah.
So do we have kumbaya here, as everybody's saying that Palo Alto opposes dedicated lanes in Palo Alto? That that's acceptable to maker, secondor, and?
Yeah, David, I think it goes back, it's up in the second amendment there.
Next paragraph, David. Dedicated lanes in Palo Alto. And then you would lose that last, the very last at the bottom? No, 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 lose, at the very bottom, lose that, yes. Okay. Any other comments? See no other lights. So, the motion before us is to authorize the mayor to sign the letter providing comments on Valley Transportation Authorities, or VTA's El Camino Bus Real Bus Rapid Transit Project Draft Environmental Impact Report, environmental assessment, or in other words the DEIR, with the following changes, that under comment number twelve, direct staff to include a reference to Caltrain EIR, the ramifications of the Caltrain EIR on congestion to Alma and perpendicular arterial streets that would compound the impacts on side streets resulting from the dedicated BRT lane. Also, add to the end of the introductory paragraph, due to lack of mitigation of serious impacts to Palo Alto traffic, Palo Alto opposes dedicated lanes in Palo Alto. VTA should implement suggested alternatives first. In terms of order, removing point number twenty to point number one, and removing item, in item six, removing the sentence, is today's ridership greater, seventy-three percent greater than ridership in nineteen ninety? Please explain. And then we are adding the language and Foothill Expressway to item thirteen, between road and where. Not that that's going to make a lot of sense to anyone watching, but it's in the record. So all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. City manager, earlier, you forewent your opportunity to make city manager comments.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will just select a few of those that are time-sensitive. First of all, the announcement this week, the Palo Alto Junior Museum and Zoo is looking for community input on its renovation project, and so, community is invited to review the scope and schedule of the renovation project and provide feedback. Anyone who would like to participate, please come to the meeting on January fourteenth from six PM to eight PM at the Junior Museum and Zoo. Next, our fifth annual Martin Luther King Junior Family Day of Service, co-sponsored by Youth Community Services, the city of Palo Alto, and Project Safety Net, will take place next Monday, January nineteenth, from eleven AM to two PM, and that takes place outside of King Plaza at City Hall. The purpose of the event is always to keep alive Dr. King's dream of justice in service. During the day, both youth and adults will be able to join service activity tables and to visit agency displays to learn about ways to serve in 2015. High school and college students can assist elementary students with service activities. There will be an open mic and open bulletin boards, so that youth and community members can share their dreams for their neighborhood, their community, and the world, as well as what they can do to be more like Dr. King. We'll be doing a canned food drive and a clothing drive for local organizations, so please bring non-perishable canned food item, a warm jacket. And lastly, I did just want to announce that while the Library Advisory Commission will be discussing with the staff some options for additional or change open hours at our libraries, and that could be a factor in the FY 2016 budget, the library's current budget does allow for the funding of all of the current hours, and with the reopening of Rinconada Park, the temporary main library located at and with the reopening of Rinconada Park, the temporary main library located at the art center was closed on Wednesday, January 7th and will be reconstituting hours at a number of the libraries that had been adjusted during the closure of both Mitchell and Rinconada. We'll have some more information on the website. And then lastly, this Wednesday, excuse me, this Thursday, January 15th, the Palo Alto Office of Emergency Services will host its sixth annual community partnerships award ceremony keynote and reception and that will be held here Thursday, January 15th in the city of council, I'm sorry, city of Palo Alto council chambers from 7:00 to 9:00 PM and reception will conclude the event at 9:00 PM. So folks and speakers will be recognized for their efforts in ensuring our community is safe and better prepared for emergencies and I believe the mayor will be making some welcoming comments to that event and I will hold other things over till next week. Thanks.
So this is the time when council members can add any announcements or comments that they might have? Seeing none, we have one more item, which is a closed session conference with city attorney on existing litigation, Sippel versus the city of Alameda, Los Angeles County Superior Court, case number BR462270. Subject authority is government code section 54956.9D1. And for this portion of the meeting, I would like to close this meeting in honor and in memory of Gloria Brown, who passed away New Year's Eve night, December 31st. Gloria is known to many people in the community. She was active with a number of nonprofits. She, one of the things she was the most proud of is she managed the campaign for Ann Witherspoon, who served on the council from 1975 to 1985. And in the process of those camp, that campaign, she became very good friends with a young high school student named Gary Fazino and she was really taken by his commitment and passion about Palo Alto and his interest in politics and she ran his first council campaign where he was successfully elected to council in 1978. So with that, we adjourn this meeting in honor of Gloria Brown.
We're having our closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, when she spoke, her priorities included the latter.